This conference will now be recorded.
I got it from Disney Plus subscriber, you know, I watch all the Marvel shows and all those Star Wars shows. There's been some really-
This is your two-minute warning prior to the meeting starting. Anyone wishing to speak, please fill out a comment card. You can find them on the table by the front door.
Call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
The next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will take place Monday, January the 9th, 2023, at 9:00 at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida, 33872. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. We will start with the consent agenda. Minutes of the Board of Supervisors, regular meeting held November the 14th, 2022. Do I have a motion? Second, are there any comments? Excuse me, are there any comments from the board on the minutes from the meeting? Are there any comments from the public on the minutes from the meeting? Okay, can we vote, please?
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the Treasuries Report, District Financials, October 2022. Do I have a motion?
Move through.
Second.
Any board comments on the Treasuries Report? Okay, I got just a couple of things Dan and I kind of went over. The plan, the monthly plan for the Treasuries Report needs to be revisited. Because it's broken down evenly amongst the 12 months, it's not really a good plan. So we're going to revisit that and there'll be a new plan that will be issued soon. The other thing I have a question is, I don't know who this is for. Is it, once again, the district, the sewer and the water for the month is less than last year? And I need somebody to look into that. I still don't understand why that would happen.
Yeah, so currently with the meter system issue, there's a number of broken meters. So we use an average estimate. And that's your big driver there is the estimation. With the new meter system going in, we'll get better actuals and we should see-
I understand we're doing it by estimate, but don't you think we would estimate it be at least as much as last year?
I think last year was the first year they started doing the estimation process. And this year they've kind of fine tuned it. So I think that's why you're getting the numbers you're getting.
Well, I'll just say that we're not going to have the new meters till the end, probably until next fiscal year. So I don't know how you figure on catching up, but we ought to figure out a way to catch up.
We will, but as, when we started into the estimation process, there was a lot of estimates that had been too low and they got caught up in the last part of last year. So there could be a blip in the numbers from last year. But until we get a new meter system that really works, we don't know. You're estimating every month. Really, there's not much we can do until we get a new one in, other than if we want to hire enough people to look at every meter every month. And then you got to input each one on an individual basis. You really can't do 4,000 a month. So it's kind of, the number's not ever going to be accurate until we get a new system.
I mean, there is no reason we should be less than last year at the end of this year. Is that correct?
Probably, yes. I would think that last year we were catching up from years of estimation and we actually started reading. They were not looked, hadn't been looked at and each meter hadn't been looked at in over two years. So there was a lot of catch-up in last year's end of the year. I would guess that the answer would be probably not, but until we get it, we really aren't going to know a good number.
Okay, another question I had, I just want to confirm, the $140,000 that we spent on the playground, is that the deposit for everything we're doing? That's what that was? Oh, and just answer a question for me. On one of the pages it says R and M-
Repair and maintenance.
Repair and, is that what that, oh, repair and maintenance, oh, okay. We spent quite a bit. Uh-huh? $75,000?
That's not one bill, that's about 20. Most of it was water sewer repair for stormwater issues or wastewater issues during the hurricane.
Okay.
A lot of that, a lot of that will be recovered from FEMA, hopefully.
And then I had a question, we spent like $7,000 on sod? Isn't that the golf, not the district?
That's more than likely. I don't know the answer specifically, but I can tell you that we're, when we dig it up and up, you have to put sod back, just like out here in Edgewater. So that may be what it very, very well may be. I'd have to look at it and see.
Yeah, if you guys go, because this is back in October, I got to believe it was for the golf course, in which case they should pay, it should come out of their monies.
I doubt it. It very, normally would be, you got sod from other places when you do wastewater improvements or whatever you do. So that would normally be within the concept of repairing the catch basin or the manhole, but it could be anything. If you give me a specific you want to look at, I'll get it for you.
One of the charges, one of the charges says practice areas, so.
That could be. I don't know the answer.
I'm kind of thinking it may be the golf course. I just want them, if it's their charge, I want them-
That's not a deal. If you can give me the specific you want looked at, I can do it.
Okay. And then, do we have a problem with the ice machines in the district as well as the ice machines on the golf course? I know we have a problem on the golf course. We apparently have a problem on ice machines in the district?
Yeah, I think the one in the utility barn has been, has had some repairs to it. And I think they're even looking at getting a new one. I don't know if that's been put in yet, but-
It just says repairs, it says about $1,200 on repairs from the district. I mean, I see it from the golf course.
Yeah, I've seen the one in the utility barn and it, it looked in pretty bad shape.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. Are there any other board comments? Any public comments on this? Yes, ma'am? You have to come up and state your name and speak into the microphone, please.
I have other issues that I put a card in for, but the water assessment, sewer assessment, I complained I was gone three weeks in the week of August. And my water bill, you say were low, mine were extremely high. And I was gone, like I say, three months in the month of August. August, September, and November were higher than the previous eight months. So the assessment was told me that they would come out and check my meter. And I've asked them to personally call me with the adjustment and I've not heard. So I'm wondering, we're getting mixed messages, but the people are looking at their bills. It is not assessed lower. How can they guestimate highest when I'm not even in the, in Sun and Lake? I don't understand that.
If you can tell me specifically where you are, I'll make sure it gets taken care of.
5602 Mantanzas. Karen Emery. Thank you.
Any other public comments on the Treasuries Report? Okay, can we have a vote, please?
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, golf financials, September 2022. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Michael, do you want to make an overall statement on these or?
Good morning, supervisors. So obviously this is our year-end financials for last fiscal year. As you'll be able to see, obviously, on the golf side, kind of, we still had some COVID influx in this fiscal year. If you go back to last, you know, first quarter of last year into season, which actually was good for golf, a lot more people were playing. So we had a really good financial year on the golf side of things. Obviously, revenue-wise, and the restaurant was actually very well. It was actually a record revenue year, but we did have, you know, we did have some struggles. We were a little bit high on labor and we were a little bit high on our cost of goods. Obviously, the price of everything was changing throughout the year pretty heavily. So we did our best to navigate through that with price increases and such. But overall, on the bottom line, you can see we had a really good year financially, with a positive EBITDA of 108,000 to a budget of 71,000. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions, but I'll be happy to answer.
Anybody from the board? I think that you had a good performance in golf and you had a horrible performance in the restaurant. And looking at the numbers, the challenge, the challenge is going to be, how do we fix the restaurant? It's what seems to be an ongoing conversation. In 2019, the restaurant lost 370,000 and change. 2020, 498,000 and change, which was certainly due to a lot of unusual circumstances. 2021, 328,000. And 2022, we improved by only $5,000 and we did, we lost 323. The plan was to lose only 193. The plan for this year is what I, I don't have it in front of me.
I don't have it in front of me either.
But my point is certainly the challenge is on the restaurant side of the business. And we've just got to figure out a way to get more volume. Your expenses are, I guess, in line for what you're trying to do, but certainly the revenue is the part that really needs to be looked at. So I don't know, I guess you're going to talk later about a promotional plan or-
Yeah, we have our marketing plan for today and obviously, the situation's obviously coming out of COVID. Obviously, the restaurant was affected enormously by COVID. And that situation is getting better every day. I would, you know, the revenue stream has been increasing year over year. I think as we manage our labor a little bit better and manage our expenses a little bit better, we will definitely see that improvement on the bottom line. Going into the last few months and going into the start of this fiscal year, we're seeing those starting to line up. We're being a little bit more efficient. And that trend's going to continue. It will continue to get better, yeah.
My opinion, I'm only one of five, but if we continue at this rate, it's just not worth it. I mean, keep losing $300,000 a year on the restaurant side of the business, we have to reexa, in my opinion, we'd have to reexamine what we're doing going forward. Just my opinion. So that would be the challenge, looking at the numbers. I do have one question I have, I have to bring up on your October, your November estimates. You're estimating that revenue is going to be about $50,000 less than last year. Can somebody get back to me and tell me what's going on?
You talking about for this, this current November compared to last November?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get back. I can let you-
Just let me know if it's in the golf portion, which I don't think it is, or if it's in the restaurant portion.
It's, well, it's probably more in the golf portion. I'll, I'll-
Yeah, I just take a look at it and get back to me and let me know, because it kind of stood out to me.
Yeah.
That's, that's all I got. Anybody have any other comments from the board on the golf?
Well, just on the restaurant side. Understand that goods have gone up. I do not understand the exorbitant price increases that you were trying to implement. What you're charging out there on the course, I think, is ludicrous. And so, you know, you're increasing your, you increased the revenue, but I imagine you lost the sales. And so I, I just think you're not looking at it the right way. And, and again, with the shack only being open until 3 o'clock, you might as well, it just doesn't make any sense. You didn't advertise it beforehand. We haven't put anything up to try to enhance it. And it's closed at 3 o'clock when you got people playing until 5 o'clock. You might as well just go back to the cart, in my opinion.
Any other comments? Any public comments? Okay, thank you, Mike. I guess we need to vote.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, public comments, this is the part of the meeting where anybody's who wants to speak on anything that we're not going to address at the meeting on this agenda have the opportunity to speak. So is there anybody who is, you got to listen?
I have two cards, yes. Julie Tiger?
Good morning and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am here representing the Heartland Games. And we are being, we are holding our pickleball, Heartland Games, senior games here in Sun and Lake this year. That was approved quite a while ago and I've been trying to promote it, which is a good thing. But the reason I'm here today is to get permission, to have vendors come in as well to help to support the Heartland Games. One of them will be a food vendor, because truthfully, we couldn't afford to, the prices at the Island View, no offense. But a box lunch would have cost $15, when a full meal would have cost 13, so it made no sense to me. So with that being said, I have feelers out to some of the local businesses, like, you know, the sub, the subplaces, to either donate, sponsor, and give, and/or give us a price that is affordable for people who will be there. Pickleball is becoming the most popular game in this country. By having it here, we are highlighting Sun and Lake. People come from all over the state because they think we are a weaker program because we are a tiny county. We are not. We have what they call 5-0, 4.5, 4-0, and down. 5-0 being the top player. Nah, there could be a couple sixes as well, but they are few and far between. With that being said, by running some games here, we highlight Sun and Lake. We get revenue from this program. I know golfers don't think so, but if it's run right, okay, I don't mean to offend anybody. I mean, I like to play golf too, but I like this better.
I'm sorry, I thought, did we not approve this?
Say that again?
And then it was canceled?
Hi Julie, can I help, can I help answer that question really quick?
I can't, I can't hear. I'm old and I am deaf.
I can't hear either, don't do that.
Yes, it was approved. So as Julie mentioned, it was approved earlier on in the year. It didn't get canceled, it just got moved back. So I think I believe it's in-
Yes, it got moved back because of me. I, long story, you don't want to hear it, but I won't be around, I won't be around to do it.
Yes, it is, it's back on. It sounds like the question is with regards to-
Vending.
The board allowing or being okay or bringing it to their attention that they would like to have vendors set up within that tournament, within the confines of the racket club.
Are we talking food trucks here?
I don't believe, I cannot hear you.
Are we talking food trucks?
We're talking food, we're talking pickleball supplies, we're talking clubs that might want to attract people to come in. We will charge them through the Heartland Games and that will all go towards the Heartland Game expenses. At this point, it's been pretty difficult because the link that the college sent us doesn't really work. So I have copied everything to, actually, I would like to leave some of this with you. There is the, the dates that we will be running all of the tournaments.
What dates are we running this?
We're running this January 13th and 14th. But then there are other events that are at another place, because the only thing approved here at Sun and Lake was pickleball, so.
So Sun and Lake is hosting the 13th and the 14th of January.
Of January, yes.
And how many, Beverly's question, how many food vendors are you going to have? And what kind of food is it?
I'm talking one.
Only one? What kind of food do they-
I don't know. It's going to be a grab and go, no matter what it is, because there's going to be, historically, these games draw a lot of people. So we will have, going to try to supply food for the players, but people that are there all day long, it's a long event. And on, one day, we will be doing the men's and women's doubles and the next day, we will be doing mixed doubles. So people can play two days, they play one day, but it's going to be a long day. And food is necessary. I at first said to myself, now they got the Island View, I'll go over there, see what they can do, but they, we can't afford that, so.
Have you checked out that all this will fit in the facility that she's planning on bringing in?
The amount, he's asking, so the amount of vendors that you're proposing, we would, I'm not sure what the final number of that is.
I don't know either.
Do we know where we're going to put them?
I, I do know that there have been suggestions, vendors who are selling pickleball equipment, all right? And I don't want to overload either, trust me, I don't want to do that and I won't.
I understand that, but I want to know whether, are they all going to fit within the facility?
Oh, yeah. Behind, have you been there? Come.
The facility?
All right, well, look behind, look behind the shuffleboard courts. There's a lot of room close to the lake that they can set up right there inside.
If we're, if the district office is okay with you putting them in, I think the only thing we have to decide about is the food.
What are we deciding about food? I don't understand.
We have a restaurant.
I know that, and that was my first concern.
We, we have-
But when I went to the restaurant and spoke with the people there, I was told they could give me a box lunch for $15. I could get a full meal for 10 or 11.
We have approved food trucks in the past for like the July the 4th and stuff like that. I see no issue with that, but I'm not sure we really want to bring in a full-blown restaurant. Perhaps she could give us more details as to what she's planning on doing. Ariel, Ariel could probably approve it.
Grab and go. That's what it, it's going to be sandwiches.
Since we're not meeting again until January, whatever, then it's going to have to be the balls in your court-
Okay.
-to deal with it and approve it, since we just found out.
I cannot, I cannot put this together after December 16th, FYI. I have to put it together ASAP because registration, the last-
I'll be back in the office this afternoon.
Great, okay, my phone number and email and everything else you may need is on that comment card, okay? Now, I'd like to leave these with you, so maybe you can post them, because I've handed them out to a number of people and I haven't seen them anywhere.
You want us to post them?
This is the registration form for people who would like to play. This is a schedule of all of the Heartland Games.
Ma'am, if you can, if you can bring all that stuff to my office this afternoon, we'll make sure it gets done for you.
I have, I have no time this afternoon. I have three meetings and a personal-
Then you can do it Monday morning.
On Saturday?
Monday morning? I'll meet you here Saturday morning, that's fine, if you want to do it. You're wasting every-
Thank you. Well, you, you guys got to work it out with the district office exactly what's going to happen. And they have to give you the approval to go forward.
I know, and if I don't get it, I don't get it. But that hurts the players and those are best we can do.
Karen Emery?
Hello, I'm Karen Emery and I live on Mantanzas 5602. I have been enjoying the benefits of the pool, the aerobics and the water yoga. It has been now over almost five weeks. Chantel's been doing a good job of communicating with us. I said what I said. Chantel. So we, we've had her communication, but the parts is on back order. So we have been, there's several of us that need it for health purposes and some just to get some good exercise in the sun. I know this is not as important to golf to so many, but to the pool, it is more important than golf. So I know the heater part, I'm asking the board to approve buying a new heater. This has been an issue that's ongoing and to wait for a part for five weeks is ridiculous. And I don't see any end in the future. It's still on back order. So I know they're trying to work on it, but if there's no end in sight, we've got Canadians that are here for six months and they've paid for their membership, and guess what? 20% of that time is already gone for them. So it's sad that people are suffering, they paid, and they're also unhappy as I am. So I'd like to know what's the backup plan, Plan B, and how fast can it be instituted?
I thought we had a heat pump on order, no?
It's been, it's been ordered five weeks. So get another heater is my wish, because if you've got an issue that's ongoing, there's, one part is holding it up. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Hi, everyone. My name is Cheyenne Reeves. I'm the, excuse me, Recreation Manager. To speak to that, yes, the pool heater has been out for approximately four and a half weeks. After that smaller hurricane at the beginning of November, it knocked it out. I've been in contact with both of our pool companies and basically the part we needed was out of stock. The backup part, which we have ordered, which is on the way, it's, it's just taken them a long time. Basically, I've been following up every day with Symbiont to make sure that the part's on the way, that I'm not missing any calls as far as the delivery goes. But at this time, they don't have an ETA as far as delivery. Now, as far as the inconvenience for the members, you know, I understand a lot of these ladies who come to the class, it is their routine and, you know, they aren't getting their money's worth. Now, I could potentially get with the director as far as an extension or any kind of reimbursement, but as far as the parts go, we are at the mercy of the company and I can't push them to go faster than they already are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have a good answer for you right now. If the, if the part's on order and we can't get it, we can't get it.
So get another part. When your car broke down for five weeks, what do you do?
I understand your frustration.
You get another one.
I understand your frustration. I'm not sure of how you get a different, you can't get a different part, you have to get the part that you need.
So replace the heater. This isn't the first time-
Oh, replace the whole heater?
Replace the heater- Replace the heater is another plan because that, we've not had just one time of this heater breaking down. This has been an ongoing issue. We've lost a lot of pool time this year and I'm a resident that's full-time. So another plan would be to get another heater.
We can look into pricing a new heater, but there's no guarantees that we will go forward with it. Until I, I'm not gonna make a commitment on something I'm not sure about.
I do think another Plan B should be looked at, is my point.
Well, we'll price out a new heater and see what it looks like.
That would be good, thank you.
I'll put that on my list of things to do.
Thank you.
Amy Struck?
Amy Strike, sixty-five sixteen Man Tansas Drive. I'm up here to find out what is gonna go on entailing the sewage issue that we have entailed since September sixteenth.
There were, in essence, twelve residents impacted. Yours, one of the nine villas. I've been out there myself five times this week. Um, on Monday, pardon? I actually rang your doorbell yesterday to tell you what was going on, but I got no answer. I'm looking at it, I'm trying my best to come up with a plan. I intend to have that done next week and I will be in touch with every one of you.
Well, what's your plan?
I'm not prepared to discuss that until I know exactly what's going on on the other side of the street.
Well, until we know what you guys are gonna do, we can't get our places cleaned. If this was one of yours, your places would have been done already. You cannot tell me that. I mean, I'm living with sewage coming through my vents because it's all up the walls. We're looking at possibly having to replace the adjoining wall now because the sewage has been sitting in there and growing.
It's not Sun 'n Lake's legal obligation.
Excuse me, ours was on your property. Yes, ours was.
We're, we are having the, uh, we're having a survey.
I even have that approved, that it was on your property. It was on the easement, you guys even fixed it.
We fixed it, but we, we have to have it surveyed to know for sure it's right on the edge. I don't know which way.
How much longer is it gonna take? Three months is a bunch of baloney.
I've been here three weeks, I told you I'd have it next week.
Ma'am, ma'am, can I say something? Dan has been working very hard on it and I know he's been out there at least five times.
Well, and I'm gonna-
Wait a minute, can I talk?
Yes.
Okay, he's been out there five times, he's been out there with, uh, Drew, which is our engineer, he's been out there with, with our contractor. They are trying to address it. The problem is, is when, when this stuff was installed, it was installing illegal. So he is trying to fix it, you know, in his defense, in his defense, he's trying to, he's trying to get it fixed. I know they're meeting out there, I think Monday, Dan, uh, Dan.
Mike, please use your-
Believe me, it doesn't matter who it is.
Mike, please use your microphone.
And it doesn't matter who it is.
Is it on?
You're wrong because no matter, every resident's important to us here, on this board. Every, right, and it's my house or your house, whatever. Dan has, had, has been addressing it. He's had contractors out there, he's had our engineer, which is, uh, I, I, he's sitting behind you. We are trying and I, right, I agree with, agree, you know, three months is a long time, but it is being addressed and, and, and I promise you one thing, it will be done within the next few weeks, okay? That's my promise to you, okay? But this board, this board, right, everybody's important to, okay? So, I mean, and I understand your fru, you know, your frustration, I understand that, so.
I'm gonna say, I'm a firm believer, actions speak louder than your words.
And I agree.
Because right now, the year and a half that I've been here almost, I have not seen that our, the residents of this community matter. What I see that matters are the flipping golf courses and that restaurant. That is the only thing that I see that is important to this community where you guys all need to realize, this is not a golf course community, it's a golf and recreation. There's, like, it's been said, there's ten thousand residents and less than four hundred are golf members. Like Karen said, we love to have that pool. We are out of it. We were out of it two weeks last year because of it being down, needing to be taken care of. We didn't get anything additional for that. I think it's ridiculous that we always have to wait, but the golf courses and that restaurant never wait. Don't tell me that they do.
Well, ma'am, they do, they wait to.
Again, actions are more than words.
I understand them, one hundred percent.
The manager said that he will have a plan to you next week.
Right.
And I, as you guys obviously know my demeanor, I don't back down. I mean, there's so much that's wrong with this community, the flooding, the drainage, the sewage, the lights, the security. That's what our assessments, in the first paragraph, those first two sentences state that.
Five minutes.
That's what all that goes for.
Ma'am, I understand your frustration, but it's not gonna be before next week that he's gonna have a solution for you.
I just want to know, why has it taken this long? The only reason why you guys all now are really, you know, starting to blow smoke up everybody's rear to get it taken care of is because the house next to our unit was up for sale and the mortgage or the lender company got involved because they didn't want to give the mortgage to the potential buyers with a sewage issue. So don't tell me that this has been a concern for all of you for almost three months. It's been a concern for maybe a week and a half to two. We are all having to live in it and it's, it's just ridiculous.
Yes, ma'am. Next, I guess this gentleman.
Mr. Bryce.
Speak into the mic, please. I mean, completely flooded with sewer. Oh, I'm the house that completely flooded with sewer. I've been out of my house for three months. Now, probably got five more months, I'm gonna be out of my house. You said something I want to question you about. You just said it was done illegally. If it was done illegally, isn't that y'all's fault? Because, wait, hold on, hold on, wait, wait before you shake your head, no. Don't y'all have to inspect the houses before they're built, while they're being built? Don't y'all ask Sun 'n Lake to inspect the houses?
You haven't inspected.
You haven't inspected. So y'all don't have nothing to do with inspections?
No.
No. That's what I, I just want to clarify because that's not what I was told. I was told Sun 'n Lakes had to inspect the houses and I'm gonna hold you to that if you're lying because I heard y'all have to come out to them houses too.
No.
So y'all, y'all had nothing to do with houses being built anymore?
No, sir.
Did y'all ever have anything to do with it?
Not forty years ago. I mean, you're, you're talking a long time ago and the code has changed, but as I told you earlier, I'm gonna do my best to get this done for you.
It being, y'all don't have to inspect. My house was filled a long time ago. So my house, I was told was, had to be inspected by y'all. So y'all never inspected houses?
Not the sewer and not, your, your plumber connects to the pipe and apparently, I don't know yet, as I told you, I'm gonna have somebody out there Monday to dig it up and the other one to, so we can tell. Right now, we're sitting here, we don't, we don't know.
I understand that, I was just, I just wanted to clarify what he just said, that y'all had nothing to do with inspections and that's not what I-
Not, not forty years ago connection of the water sewers, no.
My, my house wasn't forty years ago.
Well, twenty years ago.
Yeah, so do y'all have anything to do with it now?
Not really.
So y'all never had anything to do with it?
I, I don't-
I want, I want to answer, y'all, have y'all ever had anything to do with inspections for houses being built?
We inspect houses, but not the sewer connection.
Y'all, wait, no, hold on, what did you say?
We inspect the houses, but the county also does.
But no, 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 so you, if you inspect the houses, then you inspect the houses.
We do not have a building department. The county does building inspections, we do not.
Then what, then, I, I'm, I'm lost. You just said you inspect the houses, do you or don't you?
We do not, the county has an inspection department.
Yeah.
Our, our inspection process now, when it comes to sewer and water connections, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Mic's right here. Currently, our inspection process for utilities, our utility department handles current inspections. We, we go through the water, it's getting a little hot. Don't speak into it. Um, our, our utility department checks the water, makes sure the connection is there, they're present usually during the tap, the connection. They, they set the meter, they replace the box, the meter box if they need it and if there's a check valve, they, they supply that too. Everything beyond the meter box, I'll get to the sewer in just a second. Everything beyond the meter box is done by the plumber. So the only thing the utility department checks, once that's done for the water, they turn the faucet on outside to make sure the water's running and shut it off and check the meter, make sure it's functioning. For the sewer, it's a similar, similar deal. They'll, they'll be, usually be present during the connection to it and everything's different between gravity and low pressure. Low pressure, they come back and do a second inspection. But for gravity sewer, the only thing they have to be present for is the tap, so the connection to our system. And generally, it's just a one-time inspection for gravity sewer. Now, I can't speak, none of us, I don't think anyone's here that, twenty years ago or fifteen years ago, when everything, these houses were getting built, um, or whatever, twenty-five, I don't know what the exact dates were, I don't know what their inspection process was back then. That's, that's our problem, that we do not, we do not have the information. So I don't know if the plumber came in and connected it. I don't know, we've have, I'm not gonna get into details, but we've had issues in the past where people didn't come in and actually pay for any connection, they just came in and did it. Now, again, I can't speak to every location, but that's issues that the district has had in the past. Um, I'm not, we, that's information we just don't know. If no one came and got a permit and they connected, we have no way of telling if they did it right or not on top of that. So that's, there's a lot of lack of information because we don't have people here anymore that were here during that time, so.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir. Again, I'm gonna ask one more time because he just said he did inspections. Do y'all inspect when they put sewer? He just said it, he just said they do. Now, you keep on saying they don't. He just said they do.
The only, the only thing that they inspect is the actual connection to our system. They don't do any, no connection, no inspection for the service line, no, no inspection of your home, so.
Then how do you put a meter in to tell me how much waste I got?
That's based on your water, your water, your water connection.
What, so there's no, nothing on the other side? But you, you do do inspections?
On, on initial tap in.
But you just said sewer too?
Yes, initial tap of the sewer.
Okay, so, I didn't ask when you did it. I said, did you do inspections? That's all I'm asking, do you do inspections? Now, either you do or you don't. I didn't ask when, what time, I said, do you do inspections or do you don't?
We're gonna bow to what this gentleman says, he's our engineer. If he tells you that, that's what it is.
Okay, he said you do.
Not in the total house, not what you're asking for. I know where you're going with this, he's not gonna say what you want him to say.
No, I'm, I'm not going nowhere, my insurance is covering it, I'm blessed.
Would you like him to say it again, what he does?
Do you do inspections, yes or no?
At the service connection.
Do you do inspections, that's a yes or no?
Yes, they inspect.
It's not a yes or no.
Thank you for him saying, yes, they do. Because you want to keep on saying, no, they don't. Yes, they do. Yes, they do. Make sure that's in record. Yes, they do.
Speak into the mic, it's in the records.
Any other, do we have anybody else?
Tanya Sadeño?
Two of the gentlemen in this room. He's replacing Chris temporarily, I understand.
Can you say your name in the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Dixie Smith and I live next to Tom at six five oh one Man Tansas. Um, I, I guess I'm wondering, because I got a call from Chris that was coming to the board to be approved today.
Chris is no longer here.
And then on Monday, they would be coming out that they were going to put the backup valve in nine of the units, which were the three triplexes across from me plus me. Now, I've not heard anything today that confirms this. So am I understanding that what is going on in our area is still under consideration?
The answer to that would be yes. Chris might have been a little bit premature, but we're trying to figure out exactly what needs to happen so that we can make sure. Although we have no legal obligation, we feel that we would like to help all of you to the extent that we can. And if you'll give me just a little bit more time, Chris is gone, he's, so it's now in my-
Okay, I know you're one of the gentlemen that came out to my house.
I was there, yes ma'am.
I'm a little aware of it.
Talked to your son-in-law.
You know which board member stopped over at my house?
Yes ma'am.
Because his relatives are close by. Um, I'm very concerned because I cannot have my insurance company drop me. That's my problem.
We don't want that to happen either and we're, we're doing our best to get it.
Now, I'm, I'm gonna throw this out. You know, I had, I cleaned my place myself and it was good, but I had it sanitized. Now, I don't know how many of you are aware of this, but I brought the bill up and that bill was paid for by you folks. So that tells me, did any of you know this? You didn't know this, did you?
No.
I have a grandson who is a lawyer. You go, folks, I'm sorry, you paid that bill, that made you assume the responsibility and I really appreciate it. I really appreciated that because I worked so hard myself, five hours failing that sewage and mopping and cleaning everything and at eighty-nine years old, that's not easy.
We will get back to you all on the situation at Man Tansas next week.
So I think you need to put that under consideration. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we're gonna get back to you next week. All of you can get up and say what you like, he's still not gonna give you an answer till next week. We don't have an answer right now. And yes, we're at fault for not having an answer, but we don't have one. I mean, I'm, I can't tell you any easier, that no matter what you guys say, we can't say anything back, we're not ready to say it yet. When we have an answer next week, we'll get in contact and tell you all what, what we're thinking.
All right, I want an answer. How many of you knew that Sun 'n Lake paid for my sanitation? I want to see how many of you knew that. That's what I thought, none of you knew that, did you?
I didn't know.
Okay, Tanya, thank you.
One quick question, ma'am. Did you receive a check? Dixie?
Ma'am.
Dixie Smith?
Ma'am.
Did you receive a check? Name of the company, please?
I don't have that card with me.
Could you, would you, would you provide us that information, please?
I knew that it was paid for because I was still with Chris and then I called the company to make sure that yes, it was paid for. And then when all of this started to come across, I called the company again and yes, the bill was paid for.
Would you please provide us that name of the company, please? At when you can.
I think if you look at Chris's stuff because I left the card with him or I can call you, I have that card in my-
I'd appreciate it if you, if you'd call. Mr. Steagle at the district office, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Or I'll stop by your office, by your house.
Yes, ma'am, your name please?
My name is Tanya Sadeño. Um, I live in forty-one twenty-eight Mendoza Avenue. A lot of people know that address. Um, I have a question because, well, more like a statement. Your mission statement is to improve, uh, the, the, the quality of life in this community, to make sure that it stays affordable and friendly and safe, correct? It's in your, it's in your website. But yet, we have an unjust and, and very selfish community, from the staff to bitter neighbors. Not all of them, just some of them. We need a clean house, whether it's in here or starting with you, sir. We need to get more compassionate and empathetic people who work for the community, not for the golf course or the restaurant or the county. Because if you're a self-governing community, then it's for the community. You don't need the county because you're a self-governing community. You get perks for being that. You know, we, we have so much injustice with the code enforcement. Not just me, not that I'm a rebel, not that anything. I have a list of multiple testaments and testimonies from homeowners about the harassment they have been receiving from code enforcement, not just me. Okay? Okay? So it's, it's like they're abusing their power and nobody's putting them in check. I have got false citations about vehicles that haven't been registered and are not prepared surface in my backyard, and there's proof that there was, yet I still got cited. Does anybody answer for it? No, you want me to answer for it? That's abuse of power, but nobody wants to, to address that. You, you charge for the recreational facilities and the, the golf in our assessments, but you can't do that because you charge a separate membership for each of those things to cover the maintenance and anything else. So you can't be charging owners who don't use it, and they had, still have to pay another membership to use it. Makes no sense. So you also have the public facilities that you charge. The dog park is just a fenced-in lot. It doesn't have anything for our dogs to be entertained or anything. It's just a fenced-in lot. What do you do, cut grass like everywhere else? Cool. And the, the children's park, which I'm assuming is one of the public things, you need a canopy in there because the kids use it. They're getting burned from the slides or the handles, but nobody's addressing that. So that, if you're going to charge for that, you need to at least put something to protect the kids. And you also charge for mosquito control. After the sun goes down, nobody can go out. You will be attacked by a swarm of mosquitoes. So we need a, if, if you're using one company and you're really doing mosquito control, because that's what we're paying for, then change companies because whatever they're doing is not helping. And the, the lighting and sidewalks. Past Cortez, once you pass this beautiful HOA stuff, you go all the way to the back where the commoners live, there's no sidewalks, there's no proper lighting. You have our children going into school 6:00 AM in the morning, where start the walking on the, on the road to get to the bus stop. So really, that's safety wear. And, and you charge for security. I have nothing against the security employee themselves, but the thing is, you charge for security, but this isn't a gated community. Anybody can come in. There's been multiple break-ins, theft, vandalism, and shootings. What are we told to do? Call the police. Do, do they come out and see what's happening? No. But then again, we are not part of the golfing community per se, so you don't put that much importance. And then the water meters. I don't know who's reading them, but we need to hold them accountable because they're not reading them right. Somehow, my water doubled, it's just me and my mom. It's just me and my mom. And it doubled, and then it's going to 80, $90, $100? For what? Who's reading the meter? Then they, when I go, they say, oh, you might have a leak. I checked, there's no leak. Okay, I actually had to pay for a plumber because whoever's reading the meters took advantage and said the wrong number. And I'm not the only homeowner who's had these complaints because there's a group of us. Okay? So we need to keep whoever's reading the meters in check. Don't, don't add stuff that you don't know. If you don't know, you can't be charging for it. So also, the quality of the water that you guys say you insure, I bet you more than five of the, the members that are here, at least of the homeowners, can complain that the, the water they're cooking with and showering with is, is, it smells like, um, sewer. What are we doing about that?
That's five minutes.
Thank you. And, and that's what I mean, like, it's unhealthy for us. Whether we're, we're elderly or we're, we're a bit younger, that affects our health if the, the quality of the water is poor. You understand? But that's, that's pretty much all I have to say for this for now, but thank you. And hopefully it gets addressed. Thank you.
I think. I mean, some of the things you said, I can, I, I tend to agree with some of the things that you said I don't agree with. Perhaps we should get together and have a one-on-one. I'd be happy to sit down with you and hear you out. So maybe if you would give me your name and a number where I could reach you, I'd be happy to, to sit down and discuss it with you.
Yes, sir.
Good morning to you. Uh, my name is Liz Watts. As you can tell from my accent, I'm extremely local. But I do reside on Manor Drive. There's something I'd like to talk to you about, if I may, and I want to touch on what the lady so, so quite eloquently put things. It's a huge safety concern for me is the lighting. The lighting and the safety, exactly what the lady was saying. I travel backwards forwards to Orlando. My work takes me away for weeks at a time, so I notice things a little bit more. The most dangerous part of my journey is coming back onto this development. When you come past the roundabout and you come into where I take my turning to the left, it's like traveling into a black hole. You have a super sign there that says Florida's Community Peace. What's the point? You can't bloody see it. You know, please, please, I would like to invite you just to have a little ride around in the evenings. Like I say, I like to walk, we like to cycle in the morning. There's, I'm not being disrespectful. I call myself quite mature, but I'm sure that there are some people more elderly, and I see the dangers. I do not, I pray to God that I'm not going to be standing here at the next meeting and say, I told you so, because there's going to be an accident. There are more plots being built. That road is getting busier and busier, and the speeds are getting higher. There's no doubt about that. There's no doubt about that. Yes, there are road speed signs, but what's the point if you can't see them? So please, I'd like to invite you just to have a look and consider. Also, I'd like to see what security think about it because they're putting themselves at risk going down there as well.
Are you, are you talking primarily Sun 'n Lake Boulevard?
Yes. Because I know from the last time I was here, that light, the sign has been out since the beginning of October.
Your recommendation is speed signs?
Well, no, the actual, just the lighting coming down there.
The lighting on Sun 'n Lake.
The lighting is absolutely appalling.
That, I'm not sure we have much control over that. If I told you, you're not going to believe me. It's controlled by the county, Sun 'n Lake Boulevard. We can certainly go to the county.
Well, you know, I think something needs to be looked at because it's just not a matter of if it's going to happen.
I think, I think we agree, we have a general lighting problem here in Sun 'n Lakes. I don't think anybody would dispute that, especially with the new construction going on. That's presenting a lot of problems with streets being developed that don't have any streetlights at this point.
All right, well, thank you for the opportunity, and I hope this has been noted, and.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I don't have any other comments.
Would anybody else like to make a comment at this point in time? Okay. Next on the, on the action agenda is the 2022-23 budget amendment.
Is Scott here, Commissioner?
Oh, Scott, I'm sorry. Oh, Scott. I apologize. Scott Cork from the county commissioner.
I'm just hiding back there.
I didn't see you, I apologize.
Good morning, staff supervisors and residents. Scott Keroy, Highlands County Commissioner, District Three. Couple of things to update you on. First, let me start out because I know there's been a lot of conversation about septic and sewer. The Florida Department of Health regulates all septic and sewer in the state of Florida, as well as in Highlands County. They're in charge of the permitting, the inspection process when it comes to septic and sewer, okay? They're housed within the county, but they're a state department. So I suggest any of you folks that have inspection concerns, regulatory concerns, or what have you, when it comes to septic and sewer, you would want to direct your attention to the Florida Department of Health, Highlands County, okay? We provide some funding for programs through the Florida Department of Health, but when it comes to septic and sewer, they are the regulatory authority, not the county. Okay? They operate out of our building department. We provide office space for them, but you deal directly with them when it comes to septic and sewer. Um, uh, like Supervisor Brooks said, the county, the, the county maintained road out here is Sun 'n Lakes Boulevard, okay? Everything else is maintained by your improvement district. I think I reported back here a month or two ago, the county had received a grant. There's a sidewalk project that is going to be completed by next July. And I believe, if memory serves me right, it's going to connect down by about your district office back up towards the highway and bring those two sections of sidewalk together. And that will be completed by July. You know, other lighting concerns and things that you have, you certainly could, uh, reach out to me or you could reach out to our engineering department, and they could give you any updates as far as lighting is concerned. Since I was here last time, we did appoint a new county administrator, and that was our deputy administrator, was appointed to our county administrator position because our county administrator left July 1st. Lori Herner is the new county administrator, and we're currently in search for a deputy administrator. And, uh, that selection, I hope that process is, uh, wrapped up by the end of January at the latest here. Uh, we're wrapping up hurricane debris cleanup. They're still in the county, uh, you know, getting a few little spots here and there, uh, taken care of. Yeah, I think some of you that noticed the travel on Granada, you will see that the, the home that was partially constructed there, now some activity is happening back there. And, uh, there's certain things, I guess, that finally motivate people through the code enforcement process that, uh, about a month, month and a half ago, through that process, uh, the county commission gave our legal department the authority to start foreclosure proceedings on that house. And I guess that's what it has finally taken to get the owners of that house to start construction and to complete that project. So that is in the works. I think if you've driven by there, you've seen some activity, there's construction going on, so we're hoping that that is, that home is completed sooner than later to eliminate that eyesore in your community. Um, also, I've left some on the front table there. We have refrigerator magnets that is for our, uh, 2023 bulk and yard waste calendar. That will tell you, because we alternate weeks. Every other week, you get bulk pickup, every other week, you get yard waste pickup. So if any of you need them, certainly I invite you to put those at the district office. If you run out, please contact county staff, the solid waste department or county administration, and we'll get you some more of those up here. And, uh, don't have a whole lot other to report this time unless you have any questions for me.
Any blood questions?
Not right now.
Any public comments for this gentleman?
I just have one question.
If you got a question before you got to come up, put your name in, ask your question.
Again, Amy Strike, 6516 Matanzas Drive. You have been at every board meeting that I have attended, and this is the first that you are stating, granted, you got to talk into the mic, so, but you are referencing all of us behind here and tailing the sewage. Why is this the first week that this is brought up that we could call the Florida Health Department? I'm new to this, this living. One, the way I'm, the style of living here and being here is completely different from where I'm accustomed to. So I don't know the ins and outs of everything like this. But again, why is that just now being said?
Certainly attending the meetings, I've been aware of some of the problems that you folks have had with the sewer. And I know that been working on some of those issues and what have you. Um, whether you called down, anybody has called down to our building department that has inquired on permitting or connections to the sewer has not been brought to my attention, okay? I know that there's been, I guess, one or two backups or what have you, not speaking of residents that have been affected, but there's been a couple incidents, my understanding, on some sewer backup, okay? I apologize if I didn't state that earlier, but that is who regulates that, not the county, it's the Florida Department of Health. I was, you know, I have not had any communication from the district manager or anything of that reaching out to me with concerns. This is the first time that I've been here, attending any of these meetings, that I've heard about the inspection process of sewer connections. I've just heard that there were sewer problems. Where those problems have come from, whether they're in relation to connections or improper connections, this is the first that I've heard of this this morning, okay? And I heard some statements made up here that the county regulates and inspects that. And I just wanted to make it clear for the record that the county does not. It's the Florida Department of Health and the entire state of Florida. They regulate septic and sewer in the entire state of Florida. So I apologize, but this is the first that I've heard of anybody questioning the system design or the connections to the system. Alls I've been made aware of is that there is problems within the system. That could have been a pump that has gone down because there's gravity mains, there's force mains that push sewer to the next section or what have you. And I would assume that those things are being addressed or taken care of. This is the first time that I've ever heard any question when it comes to regulation of sewer, connection of sewer, and I just wanted to make that clear.
That's another thing. If I'm bad with them, I think a couple others back here too now. Recently, I, I found out that this was government ran, literally just within the last, like, six months. How can it be government, county, and state? How can it be three different departments? And why are we not told what area that we're in, who, who, who runs it? I mean, thi- this is just like, I, I mean, mind-boggling right now on the county, the government, state. Who, who in Sam Hayday is going to take responsibility for any of this crud?
I don't have an answer for it.
And can I ask a question for you from this meeting on?
Yes.
Uncross your arms. That really, that is the biggest, oh, I'm this type of person.
I'm sorry, it's just the most comfortable, but I certainly have no intentions of indicating.
Well, because when I'm sitting back and I see this, and then I, like, the last meeting, I see you doing this and laughing. Woo! I mean, I'm glad two other residents came up and called both of you guys out for the way that you reacted when we're up here trying to figure out. Let's get some off this. Thank you. I mean, is this, is this only recorded or is this also videoed? Is there videos here?
He did it again. He can't help himself. You think you're better than that?
Because you guys stand and, and.
All right, listen, listen. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Supervisor Hurley. Supervisor Hurley, you don't need to respond.
I appreciate your comments on my arms. I will not, certainly not do that again.
I appreciate it. And Mike, I understand your frustration with us getting, I'm going to use this word, pissed.
Oh, no, I don't, I agree with a lot of what you say.
Well, no, I'm just like, right now, right now. I know you understand us because you have always. And I, this, I have been told this multiple times on our side. And I appreciate that, and I would, if I would have known I actually was registered to vote when I moved down here, you would have had mine. But I just, I'm, I'm tired of the smoke and one person saying this, one person saying that. I mean, don't you guys all communicate with one another and work under one company? I don't understand it.
See, the problem is we can't talk outside these meetings.
We have to deal with.
Then how are decisions made so fricking quickly? How?
They're not, they're not made quickly.
They are, they are, because after our sewage issue on September 16th, and I came to that first meeting, you personally said there was no funding for the sewage at the moment, but then this, the next morning at 7:30, I'm getting another cup of coffee, and I hear them on Dear Ron behind me working on the irrigation system for 2.1 million, and then a week later, the other one for almost $400,000? But yet you have no money for all the other stuff? That, that's where my.
I mean, I'm not, the Dear Ron decision was made over a year ago. That's when it started, perhaps, but the decision to fund it was made, I don't know, a year, year and a half ago.
And then I know a couple other people would like to know, how do you contact, or who do you contact to get the public records of how our money is spent, where it goes? I mean, down to the penny.
There is a chart that we're going to go over today that shows you where your money's going.
Why do we not have a picture? Because back here, you can't see this. You cannot see from back there. Why are there not papers? I mean, there has been no financial statement since my first board meeting at the end of September.
They were all online.
They're all online.
I was told they are not. Are they all online? Okay, I was, this was a little while ago that I was told it wasn't. Okay.[1736.34] ago that I was told it wasn't. Okay. But why is it not here for us?
You mean, why isn't the copy of the agenda there? That's wrong.
Okay.
We've had them there before. We didn't do it this time.
Well, I've only had one out of all the meetings that I've been to, so.
There should be copies of the agenda there for you people to pick up.
Okay. Well, hopefully, I don't have to come up. Thank you.
Thomas Pratt, 6513 Matanzas. I wasn't just trying to pick on you, but it's just the way y'all act sometimes, like you don't give a shit about anything we're saying. Because as soon as we get done talking, let's do the golf course. Let's take care of the golf course. No, listen, I've never seen a place, hold on, let me finish, I'm talking.
Yes, sir.
I've never seen a place lose money every year, five years, the restaurant. Shut the damn thing down. If you ain't making money, I've never seen a place, well, let's just keep on giving it $300,000. For what? For the 400 people in the golf community that use it? Who cares about that damn restaurant? Use that $300,000 on something else. And if the golf course ain't money, making money, at least shut half the golf course down. You don't need both courses. Shut, and see people getting upset because they go, oh, don't you know this is a golf community? And I appreciate, I like the golf community, I like it being there. I do. It helps my property value. I understand that. But if it ain't making money, either fire everybody that's running it and get somebody to run it. Because I've never seen a place that loses money every year and you just keep on throwing money at it. That's crazy. I mean, the restaurant shouldn't even be there no more. Shut it down or let a private company come in and take it over. Let them worry about keeping it up. Let them worry about marketing. Let them worry about making money and food. Let them do it. Somebody probably come in here and take it over. And just, if you just give it to them, you run it, do what you want to, we pay the bills. They pay the bill. That would save us over $300,000 a year. Why do you keep on throwing money at it? And yet sewer's messed up. And I, I tell you, you say all this about the sewer, how come as soon as this all happened, all the manholes are getting fixed? Because they're getting so much rainwater in. Because for every eight, every one gallon of sewer, there's eight gallons of rainwater getting in because all the manholes are messed up. And yet they're getting fixed now. Why, why? I, I, the way y'all run things, it doesn't make sense. I mean, it doesn't make economical sense. I mean, you did say something about shut, you know, heck, we got to start thinking about it. It's five years. Don't you think you got enough results now? Shut it down. Shut it down. It ain't making money, you're throwing over $300,000 a year. You've got your record. You don't need another year of it doing it. Because now they're, they're, they're already saying they're going to lose money again next year? Shut it down. What's the use of keeping it there? What, is, is that too part of, oh, we gotta have that? We gotta, no, we don't have to. We don't.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else for Mr. Scott Kirouac? Anybody have anything? Can we let him go? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the time. And certainly, anybody, you certainly can reach out to me. You can HighlandsFL.gov is the county's website. It lists all of your commissioners there. My contact information is there also. So if there's any- HighlandsFL, Scott Kirouac. Yes. It's not an easy last name. K-I-R-O-U-A-C. And I want to wish everybody a very safe and happy Merry, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
We'll see you in January meeting. Thank you.
Happy New Year. Okay. 2022, 23 budget amendments.
Yep, sir. So last time we were here, we talked about doing a motion to increase the drainage or repair and maintenance on the drainage for $350,000. Current budget is $275,000.
Do we have anything to look at?
Yes. I've got an amendment, and once the motion passes, we can put this into the budget. I can bring copies over to you if you'd like. That would leave amended budget of $625,000 for the drainage.
I don't, I don't know how we can vote on it if we can't see it. So the only thing that we're moving is, is the drainage money?
Correct.
Out of our savings and to, and uses? Nothing else has to be moved from last year?
Not at this time. We're going through the audit process.
This is the time that, we only do it once a year.
Yep. We're going through the audit process. If the auditor recommends movement of anything, we'll do it at that time. It'll be in January, mid to late January is when they're supposed to come down.
Okay. So the concept, or this was my idea, I guess, to move $350,000 out of savings and put it into drainage. The idea that I thought, or that I had was that this money would be used for the first five or six items on Drew's list that gets up to 350,000, and that we would take the existing 350,000 and use it for emergency purposes, which apparently are coming almost daily. So that was the intent of moving this money. Is anybody, at least my, my thought process?
I thought there was two things that, and maybe Drew can tell me, but I thought we approved to do-
Yeah.
-two things. And do you have another list, a longer list?
It's, it was in that original packet from that board meeting.
Yeah.
We, we picked the top two because some of it was an unknown number. We're still, we're still working on it. We're tweaking the exact scope, but that is to the still priority. But the, we'll, as directed by the board, we'll use the rest of the monies to follow the list.
But isn't a lot of it going to take up over here already?
Right. Well, that's the, I think we were-
Of a million dollars. And the first five or six was ate up about 350.
Okay, okay.
Right. And I think we were going to use the additional monies, or the first amount of monies to pay for these emergencies. And then that additional is going to go to our, our main list.
Gotcha.
So is everybody from the board okay with this?
Motion to approve.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Motion to approve. Second. Are there any public comments on this? Can we vote, please?
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes.
Recruiter recommendations. That would be Ariel.
Good morning, Supervisors. Ariel Fell's, Director of Human Resources. I have been in contact with four reputable firms with regards to recruiting a general manager for the Sutton Lake Improvement District. I have received three of the four proposals at this point. They, all four firms have a start date, if you will, of beginning of January, so right after the beginning of the year. Typically, the firm, the firm that is standing out at this point the most to me, obviously without seeing that last one, they said the process would take approximately four and a half months at the very latest, is what I was told.
Or at least?
Yeah. No, I'm sorry. Like at the, at the worst case scenario, it would be about that amount of time. They said typically what they see is about 90 days. They said is kind of their, their norm. The reason they build that cushion in there is in the instance that when they're doing the recruiting and when they're accepting resumes or kind of screening those applicants, they come through and they're not really happy with them, or if we weren't happy with the applicants at that point, they kind of build in a little bit of cushion time, if you will, to be able to put it back out into the market. After speaking with David, this particular instance does not require an RFP because it is for professional services. At this point, I guess I'm just looking to know, is the board interested in us making that recommendation now? Would you like me to wait until I get that fourth proposal? My personal opinion, or my professional opinion, rather, the firm that I'm waiting on to see that last proposal is one that I think is one of two that are the most qualified, in my opinion, just with their previous experience and their previous clients, the work that they've done in the public sector, governments, counties, municipalities, things of that nature. I would really love to see that one if I can get it, you know, in the next few days, the next few business days. But just kind of wanted to, to put that there with you guys. If you guys want to move forward without that fourth proposal, then we can certainly do that.
Professional here. I think that we should wait for the second one, the-
That fourth one, the fourth.
So we don't have to do this again and again and again.
I agree. I think we should wait since, I mean, you've done your work already, Ariel, and you feel strongly about the fourth. I think we should wait until our next meeting in January to vote on it. Michael?
I don't care. It just seems to me like it's, you know, I, I'd like to have more to do with when they do come in, who gets them, who looks at them. Those are more questions.
This is-
But if you, in my mind, if you direct and want this company, I-
So this is simply to elect, to initiate, if you will, our agreement or, or our relationship with this firm. After that, just to give you an idea, again, there's one particular firm that really kind of stands out to me based on their processes, the way that they do their recruiting there, step by step from start to finish. He walked me through and I was very impressed. One of the first things, just I hope that this kind of helps with that, is the firm or the gentleman comes here and actually sits individually and speaks with the board to talk to you and get your opinion and, and staff's opinion, which I thought was really nice, of what makes a successful general manager here? What are you looking for? What is, you know, obviously, yes, a resume is a piece of paper, but someone who is the general manager of, of this district, they have to be able to-
More than one.
Is more than just what's on a piece of paper. So they, they start from there, then then at the very end of it, when we've got the, the best candidates and we've narrowed it down to, we'll say two, three, I suppose, they even recommend having like a small reception, if you will. So something in the evening where the residents are invited to, whether it's the restaurant or, you know, here in the community center, and that person is to engage and speak with the residents so that the board collectively and staff, we can see how this person interacts with the community. Just really, really good, in my opinion, just a 360 approach to filling this position. Like I said, the, that third one, I, I have high expectations for that one as well, based on the candidates that they've gotten for other public sector organizations. So I really would like to just be able to lay eyes on that, on that fourth one, just so that I know that, I feel comfortable that when we make a recommendation, we're making the best recommendation of what we really feel is, is the best firm to do this job for us. But if, if the board also doesn't want to wait for that, I, I understand that as well. But just so you know, all firms are doing that start at the very end of December or beginning of January. So it's all pre-rolled there.
And as, is, in the long run, will Ariel be the one that recommends one to us? Or are we looking at, at the same stuff? Well, how's that work?
However you want to do it.
Yeah, I'll do it. I, I think, well, let's talk, we'll get you-
She can pick the best two and you guys can pick between the-
Let's decide on the recruiters first. You want to say something?
Yeah. I'd like to know, I'd like to know if there's, if they were to look for two particular jobs, would we get a discounted rate if they were to be looking at the second one? Let me know, I'll let you know where I'm coming from. I think the general manager's job is so large that we need an operations manager.
I agree 100%.
I, and I think if we're going to be going out searching, if we could utilize these companies to also look for us as an operation manager, can we get a discounted rate on the second body, if you will? And I, I just, I think the general manager's job is too big to have the operations side included. So we need an operations manager.
Let's stay first on the company.
Right.
Yeah. I would be happy to ask.
If I'm, if I'm reading this right, you have a favorite in mind of the three?
I do.
Why don't we say, we'll go, or why don't we put up for a decision? We'll go with your choice right now. If and when you see the fourth one, you think it's a better one, then you come back to the board next meeting. Otherwise, we decide today on the company of your choosing. That would be, that way we might not have to wait again till next year to decide anything.
I think the, probably the biggest question is, because you guys are authorizing money. Now, if I understand correctly, the, Ariel's current number one choice is 34, 5?
34, 5.
So the question becomes is if, if the fourth number comes in, what number, and she wants to go with that one, what number would be too high? Do you want to just authorize her to hire someone and pick a dollar amount that says as long, not to exceed X amount of dollars?
I would be fine with that, leaving it up to them to pick out a number. They would certainly be more, she's more qualified than I think any of us are.
Are we talking two or three days? What are we talking, a week?
For the next proposal? Is that for that last proposal? I, I'm actually really surprised. I haven't seen it yet. I would expect Monday or Tuesday at the very latest of next week.
I just don't want to wait till January. I want to sit down and have this conversation again.
Of course. And, and yes, if the board gives, you know, me, obviously, this is, these are conversations that I'm having with Dan. I'm not camped out making them all by myself in my office. But if, if that is something that the board allows or, you know, Dan and I to move forward with, then, then we can do that next week, once we have that last proposal and we take a look and we say, look, we still want to go with, with this other firm that we've kind of elected this one.
Do we have to, we don't have to vote on that, do we?
Yeah. No, what I would recommend is that you guys pick a dollar amount and say, we're going to authorize Ariel to make a choice and, and to hire the person, hire the firm that she feels is most, you know, that, that, in her profession is going, her opinion is going to-
You want us to pick a dollar amount?
Correct.
We couldn't have picked it in the first place. You're saying $34,000?
Yeah. But if this number four comes in and it's 50, do you guys want to authorize $50,000 versus 34,000?
I would say, I would give her 34,000 if we decide we need two people, I guess, times two.
Right. So the, the firm that we're referencing is actually 34, 5. So if we can be super technical, I would say 35. The only thing I want to, I want to mention, so with this particular firm that we're discussing, that, they're very firm on, it includes all things. The only thing, and I have found throughout, so this is not uncommon with the others, that the firm does not cover, that, that $34,500 would not cover, would be the expenses of flying the candidate or getting the candidate here for that interview or reception. They obvious, for very obvious reasons, in my opinion, recommend that you do a spouse as well. It's a, it's a package deal and if one doesn't like-
So in your opinion, how much money do you need if you go with this company?
34, 5 if one, we don't know if two.
Right. We don't know the other, plus the expenses. And I, that number, I, I can't speak to that. I don't know what flights will cost in four months. I don't know if we're going to have four candidates or five candidates or one candidate.
Guess, guess high so we can decide on something. I mean, we're, we're saying not to exceed is what we're trying to get.
Four, so I would, I mean, you think it would-
$50,000, 75?
I would say absolutely all in, all done. There, if it hits 75, I would, I would blow my socks off. Because at this point, it would be 34, 5 for the firm and all of their services. So it's 35 plus expenses. So if we went way high, right, for multiples. Correct. Correct.
If you want to do two, it's going to be more than that, I'm sure. I don't know how much more.
What was the number? I'm sorry.
So if-
34, 5 for one.
What's the number with the, give me a number for one guy.
For, for one guy? So we're talking about for the general?
Well, we can play, if it's two guys, you just take it times two.
No, what I'm asking for clarification is we had talked about two positions. So we're talking about the cost of the general manager at 35, plus the cost of expenses. So I would say-
50 probably.
Not to exceed 50.
Probably for that one, but then you got another.
Right. That's taking-
If you want to do the second.
If you want to take the second position, that's completely out of this altogether at this moment, because that's not what we've discussed with them. I would say not to exceed the 50,000 because that should well cover the 35 that is a fixed cost for the particular firm we're talking about at this time, plus the travel expenses of-
I, I will, I will make a motion that we do 50,000.
A second.
But we're talking about possibly, we have to have a conversation on how many people we're talking about. You want to do 50,000 for the general manager?
Well, hold on a second. Yeah, just because with the, what's on the action agenda is for GM. So the operations thing is just out brought out. I'm, I'm not saying we, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is what we can approve today per the action agenda item is this amount. And then when, once she, because I don't think, what, what we're trying to decide now is what firm we're going to hire to find, fulfill these positions. So whatever firm we fire, we hire is going to fill at least one, possibly two positions. So let's pick the firm, or let Ariel pick the firm, and then we can have a conversation with them. We've hired you for one, but we, now we're thinking about two.
And then I can get a cost for what that second would look like and bring that back in January. But the process for a general manager will have already started at that point. So we would be seeking a general manager.
I mean, if that's what everybody agrees to, that's fine. We're just pushing the can down the road again. We've been talking about this for a month.
Well, we haven't, we haven't been talking about getting the general manager, these people to recruit the general manager until today. So-
Yeah, we have, we have a motion in a second to, to authorize not to exceed $50,000. That's what we need to vote on.
But let me ask you this. If we decide to offer, to go for a second position, then what do we do? We scrap the first one?
No, no, no. It'll be a change order. It'll be a change order. Because what we're choosing, what we're choosing is the firm that's going to do the searching. So.
I guess we vote? Any comments? Any public comments?
What, what is enticing about this fourth candidate, or fourth firm?
The fourth firm. So when, A, when I spoke to them, just kind of overall, my first impression of the firm, the- the representatives that we would be working with, specifically their previous work as it relates to the public sector, special improvement districts in particular, municipalities, public sector government, the work that they've done there and the positions they have filled there. As we all are very much aware, special improvement districts comes with their own very special set of requirements, I think, for a candidate who would be successful in the position of general manager. So when I was doing this search, I tried to hone in on firms that were in Florida, that would be familiar with our area, and firms that have done work in the public sector, preferably with special improvement districts, counties, municipalities, governments, et cetera. So that, this would be, in my opinion, the first runner-up as far as quality of, or the positions that they have filled, meeting that criteria.
Okay, so if we pass this, we're going to give you 50,000, but you're not going to make your final decision to next Monday or Tuesday when you-
When I see that last proposal, correct? If, if that last proposal comes in and really just blows the other one out of the water, I just want to make sure they have, I have an opportunity to see that one to make sure that I'm making the best choice possible, that's all.
Okay, so we vote, I guess, ready?
I have a question. The company that you like-
Use your mic.
The company that you like, is it a Florida company?
Yes, all four of them were from Florida. That was part of my, my search requirements.
Good job.
Okay. Any public, any, excuse me, additional public comments? All right, so let's just repeat the resolution one more time and then we'll vote.
It's not to exceed, so we're authorizing Ariel to choose a headhunter company, for lack of a better term, not to exceed 50,000.
For a general manager's position?
Correct.
That's what we're voting on.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes. Got trouble with my hands. All right, now, to Craig's point, I happen to agree with him 100%, so let, I'll let him bring it up again, about responsibilities running the, the district.
Well, it, I think with what, you know, with the projects that we have in mind, that we are diligently working on, trying to get all the i's dotted and the t's marked, we have a $6 million stormwater that we're working through, and we have a potentially $12 million wastewater treatment plant that we are working on. To oversee those two projects and to do the day-to-day operations that we have here that obviously need to be managed, you got the utility side, you've got the other, the basic general maintenance side, it's, it's too much for one person. And so we need to, in my opinion, we need to get this operations manager on board just as badly as we do a general manager. Because if, to me, absent getting an operation, the general manager that we get here would be overwhelmed with what's got, what is on the plate right now. So I, I think it's just critical that we get both in place, and, you know, I, I don't see how we can get around it.
I would agree. It's, it's a lot.
It's, it's too much for one person. It, I'm not sure that, you know, the district has got one thing that's got to be overlooked at the top level, and that's the general manager's job. He needs an operations manager to do the day-to-day, and-
Okay, so, so here's my question, is, is would the operations manager, would it be the same skillset? I mean, when we're looking, if, if we go through the general manager process, do we have a, this is our number one-
You're, you're jumping the gun. Let's hear, let's make sure the board wants to go in this direction.
Okay, well, yeah, that's, because we're going to have to create a job description.
I know. But I want to hear what everybody else thinks of that idea. Anybody have any comments on what Craig proposed?
I agree that we do need an operational manager. I don't think there's a question about that. I don't think that his skillsets are exactly the same as, as our general manager, because our general manager has to oversee everything and he just, will just have one section. And GM will still oversee him, but not for every little detail.
You guys have anything you want to add?
I disagree. I think the district manager should hire his own facility guy. He's going to know what's coming in. He can interview him, he can ask him questions. After he runs the district, he should know what he's doing. Okay? We also hired, hired our accountant, who is supposed to be their assistant, and so, so now what do we do there?
Okay.
Keep spending money everywhere, everywhere, everywhere. I mean, if we, I don't-
But Mike, it's just, I'm not saying who should hire him, but I think we need to look for the right man. And if this search comes up, then that general manager can maybe, but to think that we can do without an operations manager is just not going to happen.
Craig, I agree with you. Listen, I know what the job is, okay? It's a tough, tough job. It's one of the worst jobs I've ever seen in my life, okay? To be honest with you, really. You know, because you're yanked by everybody, okay?
So what are you suggesting?
So I think we should hire the district manager and, and then move on from that. You know, let's do it right. Let's, don't mess this one up this time, okay?
Okay.
Please, let's don't mess it up.
Well, you get a part in messing it up if we do it. I got to tell you, I worked with Chris probably the closest for the last year, because of my responsibilities. One guy can't do it. And the person before Chris couldn't do it either. So we've proven that it's not, it's more than one person's responsibility or abilities to, to do the job. To have an operations guy who knows that side of the business is, it's a very unique position. I mean, there's a lot of things involved that none of us knew, that Chris knew very well, but were not known by somebody beforehand. I think you have to have an operations manager. I think you have to have a financial guy, and I think you have to have somebody running the whole place, keeping everybody in line and divvying up responsibilities. Now, I could tell you from a financial standpoint, I don't think, if we were to get these positions filled with the right people, I don't believe you need to spend $135,000 a year with Infomark.
I agree.
So all we're doing really is going back to the good old days-
Right.
Where we had somebody like Mike Hurley running the operations end, you had somebody like Tanya running the whole division, and you had Omar, who's an accountant. Those three positions is what we're going to, what I think Craig is saying we should go back to, and eliminate Infomark and run the whole place the way we should from inside, not from outside.
I agree.
With hands on, so we know what's going on on a day-to-day basis.
So I think that's what we're talking about.
Right.
Hopefully.
And the other thing is, is in the last eight or nine months-
Yes.
Drew, we have, you know, I mean, this company's been with us for years, they know ins and outs, and really, I think he was kind of left out, out on a lot of things. I mean, and I think that was a mistake.
That's not part of this conversation, Mike.
So, like, if you don't like it, you say it.
Oh, my God, oh, my God.
Go ahead.
So, do you want to say something on this?
I, I do. I'm just trying to help translate for Mike. I think Mike wants the same thing y'all do. He just wants you to wait until you get a general manager so they can have input on the hire for the public works or utility director.
I don't think we can afford to wait.
I, I personally would like to have our general manager hire this operational manager.
But we need to have candidates ready for him to be-
But I'd like to start the search, I'd like to get the search started, because if you get him here and he's got to do, overlook everything that we've got going, and then try to spend three to four months looking for an operations manager, we're in the same boat that we were before. So I'm saying move them both at the same time. Now, who hires them? For the operations side, if Mr. Stiegel did that, he knows what's going on here probably better than any general manager that's going to walk in and three months later, you're going to think he knows his job? I don't think so. So I got no problem with him hiring the guy if he feels, or at least recommending to the general manager, that that's a good choice.
Let's at least have somebody-
All right, so- I think the first thing we've got to decide is, do we want two or one? Do we want an operations and a general?
Well, you're, you're approving one at this point in time. We can go back and discuss that with the recruiter and say, we want one to follow you.
I'm tired of putting stuff off. You just can't keep putting stuff off. If it's right to have two people, then let's say it's right to have two people, we can go forward. If it's not right, then let's, we'll decide it's not right. But we should decide something.
We're trying to.
Well, I'd say, based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like everybody's in agreement that it's, we need an additional, we need an operations manager. I mean, that's, I think that's what, I think that we're in agreement on that, so-
We agree with that.
That's not what he said.
No, he's just saying not do it right now.
He said he wanted a general manager who's an operations guy.
I'm saying let the district manager be in, be in on, on who he wants to hire. That's all I'm saying. Yes, we need it, absolutely.
So I think that's what we, what we do is-
It's an issue of timing.
Is we instruct the, we instruct, we have Ariel instruct the headhunter firm that says, we are looking for a general manager, and we, we want that general manager to hire an operations manager, so we need you to also find candidates for that general manager, make it part of the same process. So that, but the, the big question is, is it the board that's going to hire the operations manager or the general manager? That's the question.
The operations should be done, I think, I agree, by the general manager, but I don't want to wait till we get a general manager.
Understood, yeah, understood. So, so then what we do is we task the headhunting firm with providing candidates for the general manager position, and also providing candidates for, or potential candidates for an operations manager for that, and with the understanding that whoever, whatever general manager is hired, they are going to have to choose an operations manager from that.
I don't agree with that.
I, no, we have a general manager currently, and if that operations, if that search comes up with an operations manager that fits the bill, then we've got a general manager that can hire him. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be a new one, a new manager.
I can stick the new guy with somebody, yeah.
I know.
That, yeah, that works, that works well.
Goes around, comes around.
I mean, if you want to try this and say, the recruiter can do the general manager and Dan can try and do the ops by himself, is that what, I don't think that's fair to him.
I'm doing that now, and I will be doing that until you find somebody saying-
I don't think, you know, what happens if it is a good ops guy? You're going to say you got to wait until we hire a general manager?
That's not what we're saying.
Okay, but, uh, repeat what we're going to vote on, since obviously-
There's been, there's been no motion. That's what I'm, we're trying to figure out in some way, yeah.
There was a motion to spend up to $50,000.
Let's, let's vote. Let's vote to give Ariel's money right now, right?
I can reach out to this firm. If you can give me until Monday or Tuesday to make a final selection of what firm we are going with, in my conversation with them, I will say, this is also what we need. Can you tell me if these can run concurrently and get a price? I have no idea what the price of that particular one would be. So I will, I will absolutely ask, if you can give me till Monday or Tuesday, that we can absolutely put in concrete what firm we're going to be going with, and ask them, because I don't think that, I, I'd agree, we have a general manager here now. Typically, that would be a position that would be hired between human resources and the general manager. I think that that decision can be made. I think that it's not completely unreasonable to have, this is obviously another director's position, unless the new one was going to come in and get rid of all the other directors. I think that if we have a good, solid candidate that was recruited, and we have a good, solid candidate, I don't think the new general manager's going to come in angry that we have a good, solid person in that position. I think that it will do nothing but help them be successful in that position going forward. So if you can give me till Monday or Tuesday, I'll have the conversation, and I will absolutely send you all an email that says, this is what happened as a part of that conversation.
So we're kicking it until January?
There's not going to be much more movement between now and January at this point anyways. You're not losing time.
We got to make this decision now. Yes, we do, we can't-
If you, if you, if there's a consensus that I can ask them and you are saying, yes, we want, the consensus is, we would like you to discuss with the recruiting firm the potential of hiring that position, then that's absolutely what I will do. But we're not kicking that can any further when this firm won't be getting started on one position, let alone two, until the beginning of January anyways.
I'm confused already, but I think the motion is to spend up to $50,000 to hire a recruiter for the general manager. That's done, okay? So now we're just talking the rest of it.
The other one, and we vote.
No, 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 we're good.
It's already done.
We've already voted.
Yeah, we've approved that search, okay?
And so Ariel, once she makes that, Ariel now has the authority to make that decision. Basically, once that other additional information comes in, she will make that decision. And once that decision is made, she will discuss with that company what you're talking about, also searching for an operations manager.
We'll be searching.
They can start that process and then, and then-
We don't need to be involved with that, she can do that on her own. So we're going to look for two candidates.
We're officially looking for one, and she's going to talk to him about the other. We can reach out to you.
And then what? She has to come back to us and say, this is what we're going to do with the others?
Yeah, they come back and-
She will have to in January.
Yeah, and in January, she'll come back and say, yes, they can, yes, they can do it, and it's going to cost this amount for that additional person.
They're really not going to start until January anyway.
Well, the general manager will, we'll move forward, Ray. The, the operations manager will be in January.
I'm very clear with what I'm doing. We're good.
So we don't have to vote on it?
Nothing, yeah, consensus is good, we're good.
Okay, the only thing you have to let us know is if you disagree and you want to consider the fourth recruiter.
Correct, yes.
If we don't hear from you, then you're going with your original decision.
Correct, you, you're going to hear from me regardless. You're going to hear from me regardless. Whether you want to or not, I'm going to send you an email, so.
Okay, we all square on that?
Are you all square on it?
You? I'm just, I just glad that we all agreed that we need an operations guy. That's the important. All right, add-on items? None, I believe. Positions and communications? None, I believe. Staff report, general counsel?
First and foremost, I have a meeting with the county attorney scheduled for December 19th to discuss the voting issue. So I think you all should have, I emailed you on Tuesday, copies of the proposed ordinance. There's, I mean, it's essentially the same stuff that we had last time. Spaced it out a little, make it a little bit easier to read, got rid of all the strike through, so we're, so we're, so what you're seeing is, is the way, what we're proposing to the county.
So I assume, I assume everybody reviewed these. Are there any concerns, updates?
Or any, any, any other changes or proposed changes? Otherwise, this is what's going to the county attorney for discussion. I have every reason to believe that they're, the county attorney will end up recommending some changes. So it will end up coming back to the board for a final vote.
You're talking about the ordinance listings that you gave us, right?
Correct.
So the maintenance standards, sanitation, the garbage disposal, everybody's okay with those?
Yep.
Issuance of civil citations, is everybody okay with those?
Yep.
The board of supervisors, seating arrangement, I guess, everybody okay with those?
What do we do? What do you do with the terms that expire prior to?
That's what we have, that's what the county attorney is going to tell us how we have to handle it. So if they, that's the big, that's the big question, because we, we're going to see if we can stagger it in a certain way, it's like, it's, generally you don't like to have a, a vote where you have three potential candidates, you know, a, a major swing like that. But unless we're going to do our own elections, there's, there's no getting around it. Unless we change either term, this, the, the length of the terms, or the, the process, because it's, you know, general election, I mean, elections are done every two years. If we want the, if we want the supervisor's elections to handle them, to go through their office and not have to do our own, that's how it's, that's how it has to be.
And I, no, I understand that. Mike's term expires prior to either one of these next elections.
Correct, and so that's what, what we're, and the way, the way-
Why wouldn't there be a one year, in that particular case, a one year temporary, a one year term to get it in sync with the-
And that's what I'm going to talk to the county attorney about, is because the terms are four years, and so we can't, if anything, we're going to be extending, we would extend terms. My recommendation to the county attorney is, since we're, this process does away with landowners, and the landowner votes, then the, the landowner seats should be extended so that the landowners have the longest amount of representat, representation. That's going to, but that decision's going to be up to the county attorney.
But that would be one being extended and one being denied.
No, 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 there's, I don't think we can shorten. That's, my, my opinion is that we cannot shorten it.
If you read that, it's, you're extended to a year.
Everybody gets extended, there are only extensions, there are no shortings.
Why don't we do this? It sounds like rule and agreement with the exception of what the county's going to recommend on, on the vacancy, on the seats. Why don't you come back to what, if they approve, if they approve everything else, we're good. When, when it comes to this, come back and tell us what the county said, so we can discuss that. Is that fair to everybody?
Yeah, it's coming back no matter what, because I, like I say, I guarantee the county's going to have some recommended changes. So it's coming back no matter what. And that's the big question, is how do we get over the initial hump? My recommendation is to extend, to extend the terms.
All right, and that meeting is December what?
19th.
19th? All right, did you, everybody review his code of conduct? Recommendations? Is everybody okay with that?
I'm fine.
The only thing that I had a question on, David, was, uh, the person who cites the, the problem, it doesn't say that they do it in writing, it just says that they talked to the district manager.
Well, there, I mean, there's, there's-
Is there a form that they fill out or something? If there's, if somebody does something they shouldn't be doing, instead of, it sounds to me like, right now, the way it's set up, it'd be a verbal communication, but nothing in writing.
Correct, well, I mean, because that's the most basic. I mean, if people are horse playing in the pool, you don't want to have to write them up immediately. You, whoever's in charge of the pool goes out and says, hey, you guys stop, you know, stop horse playing, stop running, stop, you know, take your bottles away, you know, whatever, whatever the violation is, that's the, the initial one is-
But if it gets to the district manager, shouldn't there be something in writing?
Oh, yeah, well, absolutely. It's anything other than verbal, it's, and even, even if there's a-
I just don't think it says so here, that's what I'm asking.
Well, I mean, the, even the mo, the minor violation that says possible actions, verbal redirection and/or document violation, so this, it, it's, it's going to be up to the person that's, that's the initi, the initiator.
Right.
Does this, do I need to document this, or is a verbal enough?
Who makes that decision? The person issuing the violation?
Yeah, the person issuing the violation. And when I, and when we talk about doc, I always think, even if there's a verbal communication, that still should be documented, but when, when we talk about document violation, that's where you're handing a paper to the violator.
Okay, if you're comfortable with that. Anybody else okay with that? Everybody else? All right, so I assume that has your blessings to go to the county with. What else you got?
Well, I mean, this, this could be policy.
Oh, the code of conduct could be our policy?
So if, if you guys are comfortable with the way it's written, we'll, I'll, I'll implement it into the, we'll implement it into the policy manual and bring that back for a vote in January, and it'll, we can say it goes into effect January, you know, after that meeting.
So is everybody okay with this?
Yes.
Okay, do it. What else you got?
Uh, Avanti, we are trying to schedule a mediation because Avanti mediation will require a shade meeting. So-
Require what?
A shade meeting, which is where we, it's not pub, it's not public, but we have to hire a court reporter. Court reporter documents everything that goes on during the settlement negotiations, if it's, and then at some point in the future, that's released publicly. So, the question that I have is, should we, do you want to schedule a shade meeting during a regularly scheduled board meeting, or do we want to schedule a special meeting for a potent, for potential settlement negotiations?
Help me. Explain to me what would go on during a shade meeting? Were you involved?
Yes, there would be a, a meeting of the board, not public, not open to the public. A, it would, so it would be the board members, general manager, myself, and opposing counsel, either by Zoom or, you know, some, some form of communications, and that, and a court reporter would document the conversations that occur. If we settle, great, we, the, it's, the, the matter is settled, that settlement statement and the court reporter's documentation of the meeting would become public. Okay? If we do not settle, then the litigation continues, and after the litigation is completed, that court reporter's recording of the shade meeting would become public. We can't, it's, these board member meetings always become public. Shade meetings are the limited exception for settlement purposes, so that we have the ability to discuss, because settlement negotiations are confidential.
And it requires the board to be present?
Correct.
Well, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is a special meeting, otherwise we're going to have to, we would have to close down the public meeting and send everybody out, and then reconvene, it would be a nightmare. So my recommendation would be a special meeting, that way we can arrange it with opposing counsel and figure out how we're going to-
Is that a, a special meeting? Is it open to the public?
No.
Okay, that's going to be the shade meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
I like to go with the shade meeting, because I think it'll go smoother.
You're okay with the shade meeting?
But a special meeting?
Yeah, a special meeting. So I'm going to, I'll get with Mr. Rhodes, and he can communicate with opposing counsel, make sure they understand it has to be a shade, a shade meeting, because it's, it's probably going to be, we're looking at probably March or April of next year, most likely. That'd be, that would be my guess, so.
All right. Okay, go ahead and do that.
The, the alternative, the, and like I say, that's if we're doing a, like a, what I would consider a, a normal mediation, where both parties are present, it's also still possible that opposing counsel could say, here's our offer. And then, if that, if we have an official offer, a settlement offer, then we can have a shade meeting that just involves the board, and we don't have to involve opposing counsel. That may be able to happen earlier, but as of today, as of Wednesday, when I met with Mr. Rhodes, we do not have an official settlement offer yet.
Okay. What else you got?
Uh, turn two situation, they have, we've gotten, uh, the, Tanglewood made an offer, basically the one with $125, I think, monthly for rent for the sign. So I am waiting to hear back if, if that's something that, if they're proposing paperwork, if their attorney or general manager, whoever is going to send a proposed sublease, or if that's something I've got to draft to take to turn two. So I should have that answer, hopefully, early next week. My guess is I'm going to probably have to draft it.
Your guess is what?
I will probably have to draft it, but-
So, David, you haven't talked to turn two, though?
Yes, I have, I have.
And what was their feeling with that, the price of money?
They're, they're not happy about it.
I don't blame them.
Yeah, yeah, so.
It was what, $125?
$125 a month.
Or a sign on our property?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's our property, but it's leased to Tanglewood.
And how much do we charge Tanglewood for that sign?
Well, no, they, like I say, they're, they have the lease through the, through October of 2027. So, my, my position is still that we need to renegotiate that-
Yeah, is there, we charge them nothing, though, for that sign?
A dollar for, for 10 years, and maintenance.
They do maintain the street and maintain the-
Can we tell, can we tell them that we want to renegotiate, they should have it as zero?
We tried that already. So we tried that already. And they, they don't want, yeah, they, they're unwilling to, to, to make it free. So that's what, what my recommendation is, is we'll see what turn two does. It's all, it's all based on how fast turn two wants their sign up. If they want their sign up immediately, they pay $125 a month. If they can wait longer, then they can wait until we renegotiate the, the, the deal with Tanglewood.
So when should we start renegotiating the deal with Tanglewood?
I'm already drafting.
You already started?
It'll probably come, I won't want to see the January 9th meeting, but it'll probably be the next one.
So within the draft that you're working, are we going to have, are they going to be able to not pay for it?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, because we're, the, the proposal I'm going to make is that, is that the board takes back over the, the, the right of one.
And charge Tanglewood for having their sign up?
Correct, well, we'll charge every, all the people, but, because that's the big thing, is when it, when it was, when it was initiated, it was just Tanglewood. Now it's Tanglewood, turn two, the Dollar Store, and there's, you know, other, there's other landowners there.
But the problem there is, David, if we do that, and they maintain it now, so we'll have to maintain it. So it's going to cost, so it may cost us more money, you guys.
Why would it cost us more? We just charged them.
We maintain all the streets anyway.
No, we'll have to cut grass and all that.
Right, we have to maintain the street.
Yeah, we'll have to maintain that.
Right, just like we do everything else.
Right.
Just to be, just to be clear.
We're under a lease agreement right now, where they maintain it. If that lease agreement goes away, it doesn't automatically become our responsibility, we can charge them whatever we want to charge them.
Oh, okay, okay, that's good.
Anything else, David?
That's it, unless there's questions. Thank you, David.
Uh, finance, I'm sorry, did you say?
No.
Finance director, Dave.
Yeah, so the first item is the assessment distribution chart, that's been put out onto the website.
Do you have copies of it?
I, I do not have copies, I, I can bring some to you or email them to you.
The what, the assessment thing?
Oh.
You got it.
It should be in the agenda package I believe.
Can we make sure that this gets on the website? This, uh, assessment chart?
Got it, got it. And I heard some, uh, from the, the public commentary, it might be a little small, I can make it bigger, uh, if it's not trans, transforming over into a bigger text, I can get that out there if, if need be. Um, the budget amendment, we've already spoke about earlier, it's the increase of $350,000. Um, the next item is the $221,000 for the ARPA. I, I went through our budget and what we've spent so far, I've not seen any invoices come through for that, but, uh, once they do, I'll, uh, keep you guys, I'll, I'll send them directly to you and keep that updated on the, uh-
I guess the original question was, that $221,000, it's been bid out, or no?
I think they've been ordered, those are the, I believe those are the pumps that are going to the main lift stations.
Yeah, that was, that was 240, the whole thing was 561, I believe.
Correct. I think the 221 are the pumps that have been ordered, I, I, I mean, I'm telling you what I was told, this is secondhand information, but I think they have been ordered, they are on the way. Part of the deal is we have to do the engineering and the, uh, pad improvement to sit them on. So I think they've been ordered, but they, it was going to be sometime late spring before they got here. That was my last conversation with Chris.
And I think, uh, we can get you some-
Drew may know more than that than I do.
Just a brief update on that, we're, we did get the survey back, we're just trying to get it scheduled to get all the design done, and we have to submit to DEP for modifications to the lift stations to add the, the backup pumps, so it's-
Just make it as simple for me, the 221, we haven't done really anything with, or have we? I'm sorry.
The, it's, it's purchasing of the equipment, the main, the main pumps is the biggest-
We've bid, we've already bought it or we're waiting for it?
I believe they've been ordered, and I'm assuming we've probably put some kind of down payment.
That's what I was told.
So we've ordered the equipment, so we're going to be able to do it in a reasonable amount of time?
Correct, correct.
Assuming that we get them in a reasonable amount of time.
The, the biggest thing is the wait. Yeah, the biggest thing is the wait on equipment, because that was the biggest delay, because they have to build them, once they're ordered, they got to build them, and everything is-
I think last time, Chris said there was a, uh, I want to say-
My understanding was, we were under a time limit in this, in the 561,000. We had to spend it, or do it by a certain date.
I'll look into that, I'm not aware of that.
I believe that's, that's, was part of the deal with the-
There is a date, I do not know the exact date, but there is a date we have to spend the money by.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it gets in with a certain, that date, so we get that money. Otherwise, I think we have to file, if I remember correctly, we would have to file for an extension, or we lose it.
All right, we'll look into that.
Drew, you're going to oversee that project, with them doing this?
Yes, we, I've been given more of the information now, so.
All right, thank you.
You got anything else, Dave?
That's it, sir.
Uh, general manager?
I'd forgotten how much fun this is. If I had remembered, I might not be sitting here. Um, I have multiple things to kind of update you on. One is that in the 2019 DEP review of our Unit 23 wastewater plant, they asked that we put well pound, well pads around each one of the monitoring wells, there's 11 of them. They need to be a three by three or four by four concrete, so that you don't get infiltration into the well, because that's who, those are the wells they use to come and inspect it and make sure everything's as it should be. These had not been done, but they will be done within the next 30 days. Also, as a part of that DEP inspection, they wanted us to do additional maintenance on the infiltration ponds at Unit 23. That includes scraping the grass that has grown into them and tilling them up so that the water infiltrates into the ground in a more quickly. Um, that also is ma, is ordered. There are valves between the plant, between the ponds, so that you can pump one dry and you work on that while you do the other. Groundwater right now is so high due to the 30 however many inches there were in the last September, three, two hurricanes and a big rainstorm, we can't get them dry. So we'll have to wait until it dries up, and then KDL has, um, already contracted to go in and do what needs to be done. We, as I understand it, Drew, um, our permit expires in August, so we can expect another DEP exam between now and then, uh, so we need to make sure we have that stuff done that they wrote up before. Uh, I think we'll have that scheduled though with, with KDL. Do you have anything to add to that?
I believe everything you said is accurate. Um, I was unaware all that hadn't been done yet, but that's, it's been on the to-do list for probably close to six months for the, the wells and-
Right, well, it was on the to-do list longer than that, because it was on my to-do list about a year and a half ago.
Well, we had, we had, just to provide a little bit of delay to that, we had to get some clarification. One of the inspectors wanted us to, like, double the amount of wells and replace all of them, and, um, we had a couple of meetings with staff and DEP to get them to back off of that a little bit. Um, I don't, I don't know the reasoning behind it, but they were, they were saying our wells were mislabeled, and they're, part of the permit process, they tell us what we should label them as, so we had to get all that clarified, and that set delays, because if we had to replace all the wells, we didn't want to go and case all the old wells and then have to redo it all again, so that was some of the delay.
I'm assuming your firm is going to handle the new permitting?
Correct, we will do the renewal. Um, I believe we have to start at the beginning of next year, because they, we have to start the renewal process six months prior to the expiration, so that gives them time to review it, um, after we submit the renewal in.
Okay. Um, just to update you quickly on the Matanzas Edgewater Stormwater issue, um, the culvert between, across Matanzas was old and, and the hurricane basically started collapsing, so there was not a lot of choice about replacing that. Once you start doing that, then the catch basin on the, I guess it'd be the north side of Matanzas, between Matanzas and Edgewater, um, was cracked as well, so we had to replace that, which means you have to do the one on this side, which had sunk and damaged the pipe across Edgewater. So now we've cut Matanzas, cut Edgewater, replaced both of those. As it turns out, the engineering on that catch basin over here was probably, it wouldn't be done that way now, put it that way, it was, it was too low, which caused the sand to infiltrate. So we have now replaced that catch basin, built it up, and as you go out, it's done, um, to the right level, so that the water will go into it without taking sand with it. Today, I don't know if you saw it when you were coming in, but they, one of the catch basins down Edgewater had cracked, and we were getting infiltration around it, which undermined the walkway. Um, so all that's been taken out, a new one's probably in there by now, and they'll finish that up, close it back up, and then they're going to go to the rest of them. They're going to replace, my last understanding was there were three of them that needed to be replaced, one of which has a, has the sewer connection to this building in it. And it had, was sinking, which would crush the sewer main if we don't replace it. So it's coming out, a new one's going in. That'll be the next one. And then they'll repair the ones that they can. When they get to the end of that, which goes all the way down Edgewater and goes into the lake, that's where the stormwater actually stages into the lake. That has been damaged by, looks like by a mower maybe, and it's blocked. So all that's in process. It'll probably all be complete. The one is gonna be complete today, so maybe the end of next week. The only proviso there would be that I pull in KDL off that to go to Matanzas and dig up, Mr. Price is already gone, between Mr. Price's house and the other house and come to a conclusion of exactly where all this stuff is so that I can then say to these people, this is what we can do for you, this is what it's gonna cost, here's our proposal. We will not make that proposal until David has come up with a legal deal that will protect us and protect them. But basically, everything that's going on is old. At one point in time in the past, the people in the villas were told that it was not done properly and some of them elected, put check valves in, some of them did not. So I mean, but all of this is old. If they have an issue, it's really with the people they bought the house from or the people that, who bought the house, you know, down the line. That doesn't mean we shouldn't fix it. That just means that's what, that's reality. But, you know, we have to give them a reasonable proposal. I think we have, we should, and that's my intention. That's probably more than you wanted to know, but that's where we are. I don't know if there's anybody left that had anything to do with that, but... So unfortunately, we couldn't say that first. To address, there were on Estrada Street, which is over in the front. Estrada is a short street that goes between Tangier and Santiago. Both ends of that street, the culverts washed out during the last hurricane. We have repaired Tangier and Estrada. It was two pipes in there. Where, I said, why don't you put three? Just, three's better than two because two of them washed out. So we're waiting on a pipe. It's cut, but it, just put it in. The other end of Santiago has not been done because we're waiting on a pipe as well. The size that goes in there, we haven't been able to get. Should be here in the next week or so. As soon as it is, KDL is ready to go to do that. Just, that leads me into the discussion of FEMA. We have had now two meetings with the FEMA representatives. The total that it looks like it's gonna cost us for storm damage is somewhere 750, 750 more or less. The FEMA meetings are in essence them trying to help us fill out the paperwork to get it done. We have a FEMA rep and Sunday is slogging through that, getting it into their forms in the right format.
FEMA is gonna be about 750,000 and it's not budgeted, correct? Obviously, it's not.
Right.
We did pay FEMA 75,000 already, haven't we?
We don't pay FEMA anything. They reimburse us. We don't pay FEMA anything. They pay us. We file a claim with them and they reimburse us for money spent.
In October, I thought I saw a $75,000 check to FEMA.
No, you saw $75,000 repairs. Is that what you asked earlier this morning?
That's part of the FEMA money. So that 75 is part of the 750. Maybe that's what it was.
Precisely. The biggest, the biggest deal is Columbus, where it washed out across Columbus. That's about 250 more or less. The rest of it is Santiago, Estrada, you know, they're all around. But we're filing all the claims that we can file and we'll see what we get. You're dealing with the government, so I can't tell you when you'll get it or how much of it you'll get, but...
All right, so you're keeping track of all this?
Absolutely.
So we, because we may have to go 750 in the hole if we didn't get any money back. I mean, we'll get it eventually.
Right.
But it may not be in this current budget.
Right.
So we're okay with that if that happens?
Don't have much choice.
I mean, we have, we have to be sure that we have the 750 available if that's what it is.
Correct.
Yeah, we can, we can do it. I've seen historically where, I think in 2018, you guys did a amendment for hurricane expenses to the budget. We could possibly do something like that.
All I wanna hear from you is if you can cover it if we...
We'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. Here's the deal. You have, you have to advance it. You get it back from them or some portion of their, most of it. They actually even pay salaries of people to fill out the papers. I mean, we have to keep all these, all the miscellaneous expenses. And then they have a mitigation program where this, this was damaged, fixing it.
I understand the complexities. Do we have a separate FEMA account?
No. No, we have to keep track of all that. We have to keep track of all that. The expenses go into our budget and then they reimburse us. That's the way it works.
So that 75,000, that 75,000, there's a number of costs in there related to hurricane and getting reimbursed.
Right.
So we don't have a FEMA where...
We do not have a line item for FEMA.
Should we have a FEMA account? If it's 750,000? No?
We can look at splitting that out, but at this point...
We can, we can keep track and tell you, I mean, we can actually bring you the actual report telling you exactly what we filed the claim with FEMA for. Now, it's gonna go from here to somewhere, to Washington, to somebody to say yes or no. We're expecting FEMA inspectors to come in here in January. They've asked us not to repair anything we don't have to repair until they're here. For example, one, one of those would be the cart barn that's damaged. It's the government. They're here to help us. That's all I can tell you.
I think, and Dane can probably tell, but I think Irma took us two years to get the money back.
You get it in pieces depending on what, you know, they're gonna reimburse us for trees on the golf course. I mean, it's, and that's included in the 750. I mean, it's, you're dealing with pieces over here and they say, yes, okay, that one's okay. We'll send you a check.
I asked our FEMA rep time-wise when we can expect reimbursement. I didn't get a clear answer, but it sounded like months, not years.
Right.
I know they're kinda busy down south.
That's why I asked them.
I don't know if we're a priority to compare to down south, so...
I think we're a priority to this guy, but we have our own rep and he's in this area and...
So you're gonna keep track of it and from time to time, you'll let us know how we're doing?
Absolutely. She can give me that report right now.
Time to time, you'll tell us how you, how it's doing?
We can give you a spreadsheet that we, of what we have filed with. We can do that. Yeah, you wanna just email them that?
Okay, good.
Done. Just a quick update on the manhole project. Pretty much all of Matanzas has now been inspected. All the manholes on Matanzas, and we gave them 23 more to do. They're pretty much located up in the, we're gonna do basins from now on. The issue, it's been going, this program's been going on since 2017, but it was kinda focused on, we know this one's a problem, go fix it. As opposed to, we're just gonna take a look at all of them now because they all ought to be done. When you reseal them, you get a warranty for 10 years. All told, there's 210, I believe it is, in Sun and Lake. This will have been 30, 80 that we have done when these 23 are done. The issue gets to be bigger in that we are also responsible for the ones in Tanglewood and none of them have been inspected. So, but they're not as old as ours either, so we don't know of any. There's 250 of them. It's all told about 450. So we're, we're working on it as hard as we can work on it. I don't know how much more you want to know about that. You may be better off not knowing. I don't know. The meter project bids came back in yesterday. We have a review scheduled of that for the 19th with the meter sys who Chris contracted to put the RFP out to analyze the bids and then give us their opinion as well as with our input as to which ones we ought to go with. I know Dane was looking at them. Do you have any comment about the price that came back in?
Yeah, so the average price is in the 1.5 to 1.6 range right now.
For the meters? So it's about 150, 160,000 a year?
No, that's, that's a million five or six. I don't know if any of them bid to put it in and...
I did see some that do a yearly, what are they, service agreement? I just received them yesterday, just glanced over them. I'm gonna submit that to Dan.
We're thinking that the 185 that we allocated would be enough?
I'm not ready to say that, no.
It's too early to tell.
But they, that was with them maintaining them?
Yes, yeah. And I can forward those to all you guys.
If you don't really wanna see that.
And like I said, yeah, we'll start, we'll start the review process.
I think, I think the board, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the board would prefer that we main, hire, get a company that maintains them?
That's an option.
As opposed to us doing them ourselves?
We will, we will, we will bring back to you a recommendation at the next board meeting. Possibly two of them. You can do it this way or you can do it that way, and then that's gonna be your choice.
So that would be a service contract then?
Could be.
That's correct.
Possibly. We think you'll have that option.
Okay, so you're gonna give us both ways?
Correct.
Thank you.
And if you, that you looked at, are they still nine, 10 months out? Do you know?
That I don't know. That was Chris. That was, I guess I'd spoken to him and said, you know, with everything else, there tends to be a waiting period just because of supply issues.
So we're really talking about the end of next year, yeah, the end of next year? Before it's up and running?
Correct.
While we got 185 in the budget, we could always, if that, if that be the case, we could take that and put it towards drainage.
Or towards manholes. Either way, yeah. The thing about the manhole project, and I should mention this, is when you give these guys 20 to go do, you don't know what it's gonna cost you. They do the inspection for free. If they can coat them, it costs 3,000, $2,000 or $3,000 depending on the size of them. And you get a 10-year warranty against water intrusion from that. Somebody said you hadn't done any manholes. Well, we had. We've been doing this. I went back to 2017 because that's five years ago, but they were doing some of them before that. At any rate, when you give them 20 to do, you don't know whether each one of them's gonna cost you 3,000 or if you got one that's really bad, it might cost you 10,000 or if it has to be dug up and replaced, it could be 25,000. So we have to take it in pieces so that we can keep a handle on what it's gonna cost us. If I said go do 200, I'm done with the number might be. But they can't do 200 in a row anyway, so it's, it has to be managed and that's what we're doing. And I would say to you as well that the, the budget amendment that you made, adding another 350,000 to the budget. We're not gonna spend that until we get a good handle on what's already spent. And we're not gonna spend that just willy-nilly. We'll talk to you about what's going on and make sure that we keep a good handle on exactly where we are. Obviously, we have to address stormwater. Obviously, we're already doing it. Is, is, is the intrusion from the manholes, I mean, some of it, is it all from the manholes? I don't think so. A lot of it has to do with the low-pressure sewer system that we used that was installed here however many years ago. I mean, we, we're dealt a hand of cards and we gotta play them as best we can and that's basically what I'm doing. And I understand people's frustration, but I can't just make it work for them. I've gotta figure out exactly what the problem is and then exactly what the best solution is and then help them to the extent that we can. But we, we also can't, as Ms. Smith was saying, if, we gotta be careful what we do because we are not in the area of liability now, but we could put ourselves there if we don't make sure we get everything done right. So I'm 100% committed to helping these people. I'm not 100% committed to doing something that would give Sun and Lake liability they don't currently have. So you've heard about FEMA, probably more than you wanna know about FEMA. Florida Rural Water Association. If you recall, when I was here before, we started this Florida Rural Water Association survey, they call it. That, we have to have that done in order to go to the state for SRF funding for a new water wastewater plant or expansion of the existing one. The one they sent back in here is clearly marked draft. It was done in June of this year. We sent our response back to Florida Rural Water, Drew did, I guess Friday, or you're gonna do it today or what? Today, it'll go to them today, which is, we marked it up. Did you think about this? We don't agree with that number, whatever. So we will, we will then get a, hopefully get a response from them quickly saying, okay, we'll change this recommendation or this, we agree with that or we don't agree with that. Anyway, we're, we're in the process. It's a long involved process. You're not gonna get a new sewer plant five years probably, but we have to start. And we are started and I will drive it down the road just as fast as I can get it there. In the meantime, we gotta do the well pad, Unit 23. I mean, we gotta make sure Unit 23 stays operational until we get a new one or until they give us enough money to redo that one.
Just for clarification, the water plant, we are still planning on funding through a loan?
Water plant?
Is that correct?
Wastewater.
Sewer plant?
Wastewater, yes.
We're still, we're gonna, we're gonna fund that through a loan regardless of what the price is? And the drainage issue, we're gonna try and do without a loan?
As much as we can.
That's what we're trying to get to?
That's correct, yeah. We're trying to, like Dan was saying, take bites out of it and cash flow it ourselves.
And obviously, the drainage issue will be addressed at the budget time when we start doing budgets? On how you plan to get there and how much you can...
We won't wait that long. We're working on it right now.
Okay.
And that's part of the, that's part of the discussion that we're doing on the, that's part of the discussion that we're doing on the 350. We'll address as much of that as we can in there. That's stormwater management, so yeah, we're working on it. Quick update on the Hail, the, all of the Hail proposal is put together. It's been sent to our insurance company. They wanted to review it before we put it out for an RFP. It is significantly complicated because you've got lots and lots of properties that were damaged. Sunday worked on the spreadsheet and I mean, it's, it's a lot. It is in their hands. We can't send it out for an RFP until we get an answer back from them and then it'll go out for an RFP. It is set up where it can be one big company come in and do them all, one or lots of small companies come in and do them. So we're gonna have to figure out how we manage that process. It's about probably $900,000. Something on that order for all of these roofs. It's quite expensive when you start redoing metal roofs and especially standing seam roofs. And that's what we have. Going out to residents shortly, I sent to you this septic tank effluent pumping system explanation of what it is and if, how to tell if you got one or how to tell if you don't have one. I think Fish Lap did a really nice job putting that together for us into a nice format. I worked with Tim Barker, who's one of our techs. It's blue.
Gravity versus G.
Correct, yeah. That's it. So that will be going out. I may have already done so, I don't know. We're gonna send that in the eBlast and it's also gonna be in a brochure to put in our new residence package. Did they send it out yet or do you know?
We have not sent it out yet. It's scheduled for today.
Okay. Quick update on Unit 12. Unit 12 is out here. I met with Raymond Hornick one day this week. My days are running together. He is moving forward with that. He has, has Paulson as his engineer. They have designed the first phase of it, which was about 35 acres, Drew, or do you know? 30-something acres, which, that was his first option. He's gonna need to acquire some more property in order to meet with the county's codes, which is fine. You know, it allows for that in the agreement. He can buy them by the number. He also has been, has a tortoise service. He also has been, has a tortoise survey, so he is gonna have to... Part of the agreement was we would provide him, if I remember right, it's twenty-five acres.
I, he mentioned twenty-five per development for the first two. That's what he said. I don't, I don't have the...
I think twenty-five, I don't know if you remember, David, but I think twenty-five is his problem. Beyond twenty-five is his problem. We agreed to, to provide twenty-five acres at no cost from there on. It's do what you want to with it, but, um, he has lots of tortoises out there, and there's a limit as to how many tortoises you can put per acre. They'll have to be fenced, and they'll have to be do, and, which, I mean, that, that again, that's one of the costs of doing businesses now in, in a, in a deal, but he understands that, and he's going forward. Um, he does, is probably gonna come back to us with a request to extend the agreement for two years. Um, he's already acquired the first part, but he had, the way it's drawn, he has to take so much every two years. He wants an extension of that. So we'll have to talk about, okay, how much do you pay us, and how much don't you? And, uh, we did an abatement of assessments for two years, not a forgiveness, but an abatement. So he will owe us, he will owe us assessments on the lots that he took down in October. That's two years. So we, it, it is moving along. I just wanted to give you a report. I'm, uh, met with him. We're working on it. Uh, we also have some other issues that we have to clean up, uh, with that thing, but I think David understands where we're going, and we're, he's gonna be in touch with Raymond's attorney, and we'll get it all worked out. Uh, but that's good news. I, I was kind of afraid he was gonna bail on that deal, cause, uh, but he has spent engineering money, and they, they have it all. I have it. When you're in my office, I have a plan that he's put together, and I'll be glad to share it with you. You, you'd find it interesting. It's pretty much the first phase is single-family homes.
Both, both the first two phases will be single-family.
Yeah, which is a good thing for us. One of the issues that we, we have to deal with is that we have two sewer plants. Most of the development, the good news is most of the development out, that's going out past, um, Sunland Lake on the other side of Sunland Lake, all goes to Unit Four. Four, yeah. Four, wastewater treatment, wastewater treatment. It's only at about thirty percent capacity, something on that order, depending on the day you're talking about. So we have plenty of capacity over there. Unit Twenty-three, on the other hand, is, depends on your day you're talking about, which, which it is, and how much stormwater happens to be coming through at that time. We still have capacity. I would be a little bit nervous if we were throwing five hundred houses into it, like we're getting ready to out on the other side, but we're okay from that standpoint. I think that, that's your assessment, Drew.
All right, unless we've had any drastic changes in the last few months, other than infiltration.
Yeah, I, as we do a better job on infiltration, and that's some of the things that I've been talking to you about, that we need to deal with over on this side, uh, the, the first part, not first parts, but the, but the part in Ortega and West, that's pretty low-lying over there. It's really in a five-hundred-year, a hundred-year floodplain, I think, actually. Zone, it's a flood zone.
Yeah, the first few streets are.
Yeah, so when you get three or four feet of water hits the ground, there's a problem over there, and we need to start addressing it. We're, we've talked about it. We're getting ready to do so, and we'll, that's part of the stormwater management issue. As I said, we've got lots of stuff going on. One last thing, um, pickleball. The pickleball players were here. They have now gone. I guess they got tired of listening to us. Basically, we had a plan to redo the pickleball court, uh, tennis, one of the, two of the tennis courts into four pickleball courts. Somehow, that morphed into two pickleball courts. And the pickleball players don't like the way they're formatted, for whatever reason. I think it's valid. So we have now reached out to the people who did the marking. They say, well, all we have to do is mark out the markings and mark in the new markings, and we'll give you a price. So I don't know at this point in time where that is, price-wise, but I will come back to you and let you know, this is what it's gonna cost. Do you wanna address it? Hopefully have that by the next meeting.
Did you figure out how that happened? I mean, I thought...
Uh, I, I couldn't tell you. I know what it was when I left. I don't know what it, I know what it is now. I don't know how we got where we are. I guess at this point in time, it's not important to establish blame. It's just here, here's where we are, and here's where we're going. So that's, that's the best I can do at this point in time. And I'm, I'm pretty much approaching everything from that standpoint of, you know, here's what I got to deal with, and I'm doing my best to get it done. Okay, I think that's all I have, unless you guys have questions for me.
I, I have one concern, and if this is not the format... I have one concern, and if this is not the format, just tell me. The lady that came in that had received the check for her damage, how did that check get written, Dale, into what company?
Uh, I've got a note to look that up. I think it was, uh...
Who authorized the check to be written?
Chris.
And if it's less than twenty-five thousand, I think they can do that.
He can do that.
Yep.
David, what is our legal?
I was not consulted, but yes, it's, if it's any expenses under twenty-five thousand dollars, the general manager has the ability to do that.
My question would be, did that really give us any liability?
That's my question.
Not in his opinion.
What was that? David, I didn't hear you.
Not in my opinion.
Okay.
We don't, that does, that does not create any liability for us, because Chris wrote that check.
All right.
Okay.
But how about the next people that come in and say you wrote this one, uh, check?
Well, all...
The next-door neighbor.
All circumstan, yeah, every, every, like, all land is unique, so we don't, we're not necessarily setting precedents. Is it something I would have recommended? No, it's not something I would recommend.
I agree.
I was not consulted on that, but I do know he's been talking to other people about doing the same thing, so I couldn't tell you what has been done, what happened.
Does anybody know the cost of that?
I, I'll get you an exact amount, but I believe it's under two grand.
Under two thousand? All right, I'd like to, yeah, let me know, please.
Yeah, just to put on your list of things for the next budget, we need a detailed listing of the streets that need lighting. There's quite a few, especially in the new areas where the construction is going on, because we certainly have to address those rather quickly.
I just made myself a note prior to you saying that, that Ariel and I need to talk to our grant writer and see if there's some money out there that could be done, used for that. And I think that might, might very well happen, but we will talk to him. We already, we have a list of things we wanna talk to him about next week. It's just a matter of finding time to get to all this stuff.
Yeah, it probably looks like we're gonna have to play catch-up with all the construction going on, but then we still, because we've heard a lot of complaints from the residents, we still probably should start budgeting lighting every year, so we can go back and, and fix our wrongs, so to speak.
I would agree with that, but if we can get some money to do it, grant money to do it, that would be even better.
Yeah, and I, and I know that, Chris, we, you know, we raised impact fees, or whatever the technical term is for them, for, for new construction, so we're gonna take a look at that to see if that was considered in those fees, because those, those fees may increase again to compensate for that.
And where are we on the basketball courts? Basketball courts?
Still waiting, still waiting for the, still waiting for the, uh, legal response from the county.
What'd you say? I didn't hear what you said. What'd you say?
We're still waiting for the county to respond, is to...
Yeah, the ba, the basketball court, in all honesty, if the playground goes where it is,
It's gotta go.
Where we think it's gonna go, I think the days of the basketball court are gone.
I think we need, in my opinion, I'd like to see us act on it now. Uh, it was probably at least a week or two ago, on a Saturday afternoon, getting ready to go out for a couples league, I believe it was, and there was a music being played over here with the most vulgar, obnoxious language that you could hear clearly at the clubhouse. And I just don't think they're, they're not needed. Just, let's take them down.
The only reason to delay was that we took RPAC money on it, and we're trying to make sure that we don't have to pay it back. But it's seventy-five hundred bucks is the, is the question. So if you wanna direct us to take them down today, they'll be down.
I mean, is there a big cost taking it down?
Well, in the past, in the past, when we had trouble there, we took the basketball hoops down, and that eliminated, you know, the kids going in there. And, and Craig's right. I, um, I was actually over here the other night, and, um, ran into the same thing with the music blasting. It's just, you know, I mean, I think if we take...
The music blasting is one thing. It was the vulgar language that was being...
Well, whatever it was, it was bad. But if we take the basketball hoops down...
Can I speak?
No.
Oh, you have to go first?
If we take the basketball hoops down, that, and wait for the county to back to us, we're okay there, right?
Yeah.
Cause, right, all right.
I just felt we were in a stronger position if they're still up before we take it down, but it's not that much money. I mean, I...
Right.
I'm, I'm taking them down.
All right, wait, let me, let's give this young lady an opportunity.
My name's Stacy Green, uh, forty-six oh five Nadina Drive. I'm just questionable. That's the first I've heard. I didn't make the last meeting. Um, I do have small children with a desire to use them, and I believe where I live, I'm not supposed to have the basketball hoops in specific locations of my home. So I'm just curious why they'd be coming down, and if the music, I can understand that. My daughter's twelve. I don't wanna have her listening to vulgar music, but why wouldn't security be called? Why wouldn't they be coming and having somebody make them stop that?
I did call security.
Okay, so did they have them leave, or...
Well, they, they probably just, uh, if they turn it off, and then when the security person leaves, they probably turn it back on.
I just think it's unfortunate to take away something that could be such a great thing for so many children, to be able to have a release, to be able to practice a sport, and to punish them, because some people are out here, you know...
It's not just that, ma'am. If you've been here at the previous meetings, you'll understand. We've had to call the police. Gunshots have been fired. It's really a hazard.
Yeah, you really don't...
I, I'm, I, I, if that's a thing, I'm concerned why we haven't heard about that if we haven't been able to make the meetings. Like, as far as I know, I, I'm living in a place that I chose to move here to because of the type of place that Sunland Lake is represented as.
Well, we can't help if outside people come in...
I understand that.
And have that kind of, they're, they're not even residents of Sunland Lake. They're outside people coming in and playing, and that's, that's where the problem is coming in.
But I feel like if you get rid of one thing, then why are we keeping others? That's just, I mean, if you get rid of one thing, there's gonna be something somewhere else.
What would you do if a gunshot was shot, one of your small children was there? How would you handle that?
I, I would, obviously, I mean...
We're trying to be proactive.
Something like, that wouldn't happen, but I mean, I don't think that, I mean, that's just, it's punishment. That's one of the reasons that you look at a community like this with children, is the things that we can bring our kids to, the parks, you know, things like that, so...
We can lower the nets instead of taking them out is one possibility. The guys that are wanting to play won't do it if they're not regulation. So if you want it for smaller children, that could be done as well.
I mean, that's a possibility, but I mean, like I say, where I live, I don't believe it's a possibility for me to have a basketball hoop or something like that, you know? So I mean, would that, would I be questioning changing things differently, like?
We are putting in a, a new playground area with new updated playground equipment with shade. It, and it will be going into that particular area, so it's a...
Mine's twelve, so she's more along the lines of looking at sport and not playground. And, you know, she recently brought up to me wanting to go to the basketball courts. That's why I asked, because, you know, it's just unfortunate that others are getting punished due to that.
Yeah.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm kind of upset to know that there was gunshots fired and no warning out to, that I've heard or seen in this community, because I would be more mindful, you know, of what I'm doing. I thought I lived in a safe place, and I think that's something that, as a resident, if something like that is out there, you guys should be making sure that all of us are aware of what's happening. Thank you.
It's probably in the police report, I imagine, because I know they were called.
I know I'm of a certain age, and the majority of the people in here are not basketball stars, and I know the risk of gun violence, but we are living in a wonderful environment to, to take down a basketball. We're limiting the youth for healthy activity. I'm gonna say we have young people that do use foul language, as do I. So to take down a basketball, this is part of our culture. Kids should be playing outside, but vandals and people who have evil intent, we do need to ramp up security. I'm gonna say I have kids and grandkids that have come down. We should not eliminate something youthful that's healthy just because we have had a couple of incidents. Again, I'm not advocating that we don't have security. We need to keep the basketball. I'm hearing all the negativity on the board, but you need to look at around our community. Are we only serving the golfers? Are we only serving who? Because...
We're, we're serving the pool people and everybody.
But, but you're all saying do away with the basketball.
No, the problem is, is that we're gonna put in
Yeah.
a revised playground.
Fine.
For the kids.
For what age? Cause that's not gonna hit the teenagers.
I don't know what ages, no, it's not for teenagers.
That's not gonna hit the, the, the young adults.
The problem is it's gonna be right next to the basketball court, which we don't think is a good thing for the kids.
So where are you gonna put the basketball court?
That's a very good question.
Because I don't think you should abolish it. Put the, put the children's playground area in another...
We don't think it should stay where it is if we put a playground.
But the basketball should stay. My vote.
Yes, ma'am. We, we, that has not been decided. We don't know the cost of moving it.
I'm seeing a lot of negative shaking of heads because of foul language and music. I'm guilty of that.
It happens, it happens multiple times a week. I mean, it's all the time.
So security called how many times? I, I don't...
The people that are playing there are not residents.
Well, then that should be, they should be flagged and exited the location. I agree with that. This is for our community. We're not here to serve other communities. But I think we're missing our young people that do live in this community, and I'm not just speaking teenagers, I'm speaking young adults. So, and of course, a few seniors may get out there, but it's not. I, I think we should have pumped up security, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am.
Can I speak for that?
Yeah.
Hi, Cheyenne again, Recreation Manager. Um, I work over at the Recreation Office about five to six days a week. I see everything that happens over there in regards to the basketball courts until after six P.M. After six P.M., it's, it's a bit harder to regulate that. You know, security is called as often as we can acknowledge the situations, you know? Anytime I hear any crazy music, call security. Anytime I see a situation, like we had some kids show off fireworks, like little firecrackers at the basketball courts, call security. But it's, you know, unfortunately, it is kind of a hub for a crowd that doesn't make the best choices. Now, I'm not... Uh, well, what I'm... What I'm saying is that, you know, they might have their opinions now as far as wanting to take the basketball courts down. Not to say that that's gonna be finalized right now. I do, yes.
That's not on the agenda.
This is not on the agenda. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as the basketball court?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I also have three boys. I have three children in their twenties. Um, so I just wanna say that, you know, you can be a great parent, and you can do whatever you want to raise your kids and teach them to make the right decisions, but once they leave the house, you don't know what they're gonna do. So therefore, you know, I've, I've had my kids, when you take away something, they find another way to get themselves in trouble. So we can take away the basketball hoops, but they're just gonna end up finding something else to do. People rebel. So I just think if you get rid of one thing, expect them to do something else.
Thank you. As far as the basketball court goes, unless somebody wants to make a, a motion, it stays where it is for the time being. Okay, I didn't hear a motion. Uh...
That's it, for me.
Project, oh, Project Ma, oh, no, I'm sorry, Community, Community Service and Human Resources, Ariel.
Me, okay. So, um, just a couple of quick updates to the staff report that was sent out in your board packets. Um, I did send out an email. I hope all of you were able to take a look at that yesterday. Um, it had a link inside that is to the new website. I had mentioned in that email, with very few minor, minor, minor exceptions, just minimal little tweaks, because we're going through it with a fine-tooth comb, um, it is ready to go live. So, um, the plan, I met with Fish Slap yesterday, the plan is that we will be, um, starting that conversion, so you have to take the current domain, there's a merging process, so that the SNLDistrict.org now will take you to that new website. Um, we are going to be starting that next week. Monday, I think we were gonna start on Wednesday, and then the website should be ready to go live on the nineteenth. Initially, we were thinking it was gonna be a little bit later in the year, so that was good news to see that that was able to get done just a little bit sooner. So, looking, looking forward to that. Hopefully, you all get an opportunity to kind of peek through that. It, it is an ongoing process. It's not, once it's done, it's done forever. Uh, Fish Slap obviously is contracted to keep up with that, and we'll be sending them content if we ever find that, you know, we want a page tweak. find that, you know, we want a page tweak, or we get feedback that maybe people are having a hard time finding X, Y, Z page. It's, it's constantly evolving, so, um, they've been fantastic to work with, and we appreciate them immensely. Um, on the same breath with Fish Slap, um, we had a meeting probably two weeks ago now, uh, with regards to the new resident packet. That's something that they have taken on. They're going to completely revamp, um, give us some great suggestions as to, you know, do they think we should do a little bit of rebranding with what's in there, taking the current materials, spicing them up a little bit, as you've seen with, um, some of the content that they've provided to us, um, recently, such as the, um, sewer flyer that Dan had them, uh, put together. So, one of the other pieces I think that's important to mention that they will be including in there because it's come up today is a, an assessment brochure, not really a brochure, I guess, a, an assessment infographic that explains, um, that's very easy to read and says this, these are what assessments are, these are what your assessment dollars pay for, um, so that it's broken up a little bit, so that folks can read it and truly understand it.
I think you could just take Dane's, uh, graph that he gave us, and that gives a breakdown of the assessments and what they're for, and put that in the, uh, package.
I, I haven't seen that, so I'll-
You haven't seen it?
No.
He's got one that he prepared.
Either that or there's a, I've already seen a written up, uh, list of what is covered by the assessments. Maybe we throw that in.
That's already in there, um-
I mean, it's a breakdown of, of how the assessments are being split for two thousand twenty-three. To me, that would be a natural if that's what you're looking for.
So there's already an assessment brochure that's in there, and it obviously explains it in too few words because it seems like there's still a lot of misunderstanding. So one of the things that I appreciate about Fish Slap is they're taking a fresh set of eyes, and they're looking at it and saying, from their perspective and the, as per perspective of the public, how can we say this in a way that makes sense and it really drives it home? And if it's including a graph, fantastic. I think that it needs to be a little bit bigger than just a graph, and a little bit bigger than just a tiny little brochure, so if it's a-
You take the information and give it to them and let them do the right work.
Yes, yeah, that's exactly what we're doing. We've given them the whole packet, and we went line by line, took out every piece that was in there, um, and, and talked about, you know, how we can make this look better, and they're gonna come to us with some recommendations as well. Um, I know that there are some adjustments though, but until that happened that need to be corrected, um, all of the twenty twenty-three rates will be put in. Um, I would imagine now is probably a better time since we're in December.
The twenty twenty-three rate should be in the current packages. Hopefully we've gone in and, and changed them over. The package that I saw the other day in the office had two thousand nineteen rates.
Okay.
So hopefully we're changing the existing package.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm saying, in that interim, until we get that new packet, we're making those adjustments.
The rates are in effect right now. The, the sample that I saw in the office the other day had the two thousand nineteen rates.
Yeah, that's correct. That's an old packet. That's not the one the girls are handing out to the office. That's just the old packet.
Which package did I see?
Let me, I'll follow up with-
Yeah, just make sure that we have the correct rates.
Yeah, I'll talk to the girls. Yep, we'll, we'll, yes, we will absolutely make sure that that's, we're not waiting for Fish Slap on that.
Do you have any idea when this will be ready now?
Well, um, our plan is the beginning of the year.
So, January ninth meeting?
Yeah, that's fine. I can, I can, if I give them that date, I have no doubt that they'll have-
That's fine. And I will tell you, I did get an opportunity to look at the, uh, the website. I thought it was done very well. My congratulations to all of you who participated in it. I think, I think everybody's gonna be pleased when they see it. The only thing that I saw that I would like added, and I may have missed it, was there's no monthly reports.
So that, I believe, if you, did you look on the new link? Did you look at the link that I sent last night? The link that I sent last night? Did you open that link?
Yeah.
You did? Okay, I'll check then, um-
Yeah, I didn't see, I couldn't find, now that, they may be there. I just couldn't find-
No problem, so I will, I'll follow up with them.
I was able to find the budgets and all. Oh, the other thing was on the, uh, the minutes of all the meetings. This is a minor detail, but it says vis- it says video, and most of them are audio.
Okay, we'll, we'll cross to see, see if that's just maybe an easy push.
This year, I think.
Yes.
So all the other listings are audio.
Okay.
Or should be audio, excuse me. What else you got?
That, that's all I have for right this second.
Any questions for Ariel? Any questions out there?
What?
Uh, Project Manager, Ms. Sunday.
Yes. I have reached out to this S and M E company regarding this probable cost for the pool. I'm in it. And they have responded that the person that did this cost is no longer there, so they have passed it on to the person that took that position. So I'm waiting to hear back from them for an updated amount for this pool. But from what I've seen, this is almost two years old, so that cost is gonna go up. So we're looking at basic, a base rate of just a pool cost of being two million. And that doesn't include the other costs that no one looks at as far as the unseens.
So the original estimate, or that, that's been provided to us is, can be discarded?
Yes.
And we're working on a new estimate based on-
Yes, but we're not gonna get an actual estimate because we haven't signed a contract with anyone to make this, this project go forward. So they're just giving us a probable cost. So right now, that probable cost is two million.
So the sheet that they gave us, which was a million and a half-
Yes, it's going to go-
Is now at two million dollars?
Yes.
I would think it's-
Today's dollars?
Yes.
I think, I would think at least. That's how much pools have gone up.
And that's just the pool. That doesn't include everything else that this pool is going to require. Yes.
Can we get a, can the company who gave us this estimate, give us an estimate in current dollars?
We've asked them to do that.
Yes.
It certainly won't be less than a billion five, probably more like two five.
That's what we need.
Right. But you, but you will need to understand that that there is just the pool, and it's a probable cost because we have not signed-
The sheet that they quoted originally was not just the pool.
Yes, it is.
Right?
Yes, sir, it is. If you read through, if you read through the statement, it does not say everything that is required to build this pool. Because they, they're not going to give us an actual of everything because we haven't signed a contract to move forward with this project.
This thing says restrooms, pool showers, pool fence, I mean, it's kind-
But you're not, but you're not looking at the bigger picture of the unseens. Like, okay, so you're gonna have a restroom. Does that, does that mean that they're gonna cover putting in all the, all the, like, the toilets, lockers, how many showers?
The original estimate we got was, it was worthless.
That was just their wild-
Yes.
Guess. They're the same guys that wanted us to put a walk around the lake.
I, if this was ballpark, all I'm asking is, what is the estimate for this in today's dollars?
And I'm waiting for them to send me that. Like I'm saying, costs have gone up. Right, right now, they have on this-
That's why I'm asking for the estimate.
I'm waiting for that. Once I get that, I will be glad to give it to you. But like I said, like, right down here, they have eight dollars a square foot for concrete. Right now, concrete's at twelve dollars a square foot. So that's gonna go up right there.
Sunday, Sunday, who did the specs on this pool?
This company called S and M E.
There were no specs. It's just-
So there are no specs, so we did not hire anybody-
No.
To come in and design this?
This, these are the guys that did the whole rec plan. So it's just a wild guess, that's all it is.
Yeah, well, that's cost us like thirty thousand dollars.
Exactly.
Right. And no one signed a contract with them to move forward with this. So now it's just a probable cost.
It's the same guys that said we should do the walk around the lake, but we don't have the land.
I personally think we need a pool. Obviously, by the time we get done pricing it, it's gonna be more than the water million.
Yes.
It'd be more in the neighborhood of three or four million dollars.
We gotta make a decision on whether we want a pool or not, and then find, you know, go to Dane and say, when and if can we do this? I mean, we got a little kiddie pool right now that holds sixty people.
Sixty-nine, but-
How can we make a decision when we don't even know what we want? We don't even have specs on it.
We, we couldn't afford, we couldn't afford it if it was a million five.
I know, Ray, I got the same thing, but we don't have specs on-
You, you couldn't afford it if it was a million five.
Right.
It makes, it really is kind of a moot point.
Okay, that kinda makes it simple.
Right.
That makes it simple.
We're, we're trying to figure out how to pay for the meters. I don't think you can do that plus the- Not for the next five years.
I don't know how you can make determination whether you can afford it until you know what it's gonna cost. And that's all I was asking for, is what it's gonna cost. So we could decide.
I think Dane just said if it's a million five, we can't afford it.
Right.
Right.
So if it's two million, we sure look at it.
Right.
I mean, that's-
Fine, no pool.
Well, not for the foreseeable future.
Well, it's two years, it's in the budget for two years from now. It's not in the budget for next year, this year or next year. So I guess we'll take it out of the budget.
We can, we can extend it to, uh, uh, later years. I think we, I agree with you, we should have a pool. I agree with, uh, uh, but I think as a practical matter, it's more important to get the drainage straightened out, and the wastewater straightened out, and deal with that.
If we start kicking it down the road, you know, you know, it'll never get done. So we either take it out, or we do it.
That's up to you guys, but I, I wouldn't take it out because I think it's needed, but I think it's something we can't afford to do. That's my opinion.
I mean, if you think we can afford, if you think we can, we should have it, there's gotta be a way to figure out how to pay for it. Maybe we go to the people and say, y'all, this is what the deal is, and see what they say. I don't know. I'm just saying, the pool that we have now, for the building that's going on, not everybody's putting an in-ground pool in because of the cost of that. That's over a hundred grand-
It's inadequate.
Basically, to put an in-ground pool. So a lot of people don't have the, the, uh, the luxury of having a pool in their backyards anymore, and I think the district owes it to the people who live here to offer a decent pool that can handle more than sixty people. Cause I believe that is our limit. Is that correct?
The limit's sixty-nine, but-
It's limited to about sixty people.
Sixty-nine.
Well, we're gonna have a heck of a lot more than sixty people who probably would take advantage of a pool. That's, that's my point.
I don't see any way you can do it in the next two years.
So I still think we, we'd like to see a price of a pool.
Okay.
So that we can say, oh, this is, you know, I don't, I'd like to see it. I don't know if anybody else would. I'd like to see it, I just don't, we gotta see how we finance it. Right. Well, you, you gotta get the first base before you can get the second base. First base is to find out what we're talking about.
We've reached out to these people, and they haven't gotten back to us yet, but I mean, I, I think a more reasonable number is three million than two million, but by the time you get through with it.
This, this won't cost us any money to find this out, will it?
It's possible that, yes, it could.
Well, don't do it if it's gonna cost us money, I can tell you that.
It, it was thirty-four thousand last time, so-
Yeah, no, that was thirty-four thousand, the thirty thousand for the whole recreation.
Oh, well, okay, I was not aware of that. I wasn't here for that.
So it costs us thirty-four thousand? It costs us thirty-four thousand to find out we can't do it?
No, I was wrong, I'm sorry. But there's still a cost to find out what this is gonna be, because they're gonna have to come out here and do something.
The issue's gotta be, if you're, if you want an honest to goodness price, you gotta say, I want a pool for three hundred people, and here's where I want it to be, and this is what I want it to look like. And they're gonna tell you, that'll cost you a hundred thousand bucks to do the design, or whatever number it is.
Why, how about this? Why don't you come back to us at the next month and tell us how much it would cost to get this, the, what we have updated, if anything?
Okay.
And then we'll decide if we wanna spend the money to get a new number.
Yes, sir.
Is that agreeable to everybody?
I don't think you can update it.
Huh?
I don't think you can update it. Will you wanna expand it?
I don't know. I don't know.
Do you wanna expand the existing pool? Is that what you want?
No, no, no. The, the pool that we presented last year in April, that pool, which says a million five- Is it gonna cost us?
Okay, well, we will ask that question. We've already reached out to them, but the guy that did this is gone. There may be a reason for that.
Well, the company, is the company gone?
No, but we're-
Well, if the company's not gone, they should be able to update it. Should they not, if there's a cost list, no?
We will ask the question, absolutely. We already have, but we will do that.
Okay, moving on. Golf, record, uh, restaurant marketing plan. And anything else?
Good afternoon, Supervisors. While, while he's getting set up there, um, I just wanted to go through a couple things on the report. Um- Membership's up to ninety-four percent, which is about seventy-nine, eighty thousand dollars short of plan, but we will see another influx here in the first part to mid part of January, uh, with our seasonal folks. Um, still working on, uh, the capital projects. I did, uh, we do have on order two new ice machines that we're gonna put on Deer Run as part of our capital project. We're actually gonna put some cabinets in there too, to, to make the ba- the restaurants look a little better out there. Uh, the ice machine on number five Turtle, um, will be repaired as soon as the new part arrives. It was, it was under warranty, um, so we'll get that as soon as that comes in. I, I don't have a projected date, but I think it's within the next couple of weeks. Um-
Are you talking about the water machines?
Ice machine, yeah.
Yeah. Are we going back to the same company? Because we've had lots of problems with the, all of our machines, and if we go back to the same company, I'm assuming it's gonna happen again.
Uh, the new ones that, that we put in on Turtle, uh, up until recently, with this, with this one that had the, the failed, it's a motor of some sort, they haven't been too bad. The ones that are on Deer Run are, are very, very old. Um, and they're just worn out. Um, I, I, I mean, ice, I mean, you, you're, you're right. We, I mean, we, we are repairing them often, uh, but they live outside in, in the summer heat, and they, they run a lot, so I, I, I don't know if it's necessarily a change in companies, but, um- The ones on Turtle have been decent.
They have been pretty good up until this one started.
Right.
Well, Turtle Five, Turtle Five's not working, right?
Correct.
Up until then, it's been, it's been there for what, two years old?
Two or three, yeah.
They have been working well, it's just this one with the part that we can't seem to get.
Right. They, they tried to repair, they tried to repair it, and it lasted a little bit, and then we got it. Yeah, so-
Deer fifteen-
Has been down for a while. Was, it's, it's gonna cost more to repair it than it's worth, so. But the two I ordered for Deer Run are the same ones that we have on Turtle. Just a couple of quick notes, uh, that I had from Jimmy. So if you remember last year on, uh, Deer Run number four, five, and a little bit on six, we had the Poe, uh, come into the greens. That was pretty annoying and wouldn't go away last year. So they have put the, uh, pre-emergent herbicide out for that this year. It's called Curb. Uh, and so far, you know, in my inspection, I have not seen any Poe come back, um, but we'll keep an eye on that. Uh, we have, and the fairways, put out our pre-emergent program. We have overseeded the T-boxes on both courses. I'm sure you're able to see that. They have started to mow them. Um, and as they continue to mow them, they'll get better and better. They'll probably go out and clean up a couple areas. Sometimes the seed doesn't necessarily germinate, or something might happen, so they'll, they'll, they'll follow up with, uh, a few, a little bit more seed out there to clean some of those areas up. Uh, you probably noticed that we put out a lot of new, um, greenside bunker sand, the Jangle sand, the same, it's the same sand we put in all the other bunkers, but we did number eight Turtle. Um, we did the second bunker on eleven deer, ten deer, seventeen deer. All those bunkers received new sand. Um, and we'll continue doing that as we can, um, kind of picking and choosing which ones needed the most, um, and as our budget allows. Just wanna let you know that the, the restaurant will close on Christmas Eve at three-thirty, and it will be closed all day Christmas Day. That's our typical operation that we've always done in the past, and the pro shop will be closed on Christmas Day as well. Um, the Um, the other note, uh, with Chef Mac, uh, he plans to remain on staff until September. Um, as we talked about in previous meetings, um, we have, we have been advertising for that position. There has been a few applicants that have come in that we've reviewed, um, following the timeline. I mean, obviously, we're reviewing applications now, but a, a no later than deadline for hiring a replacement. Uh, we have set it July first. Obviously, it could be sooner than that. Um, if we find an applicant that, that's really good, that, um, we'd like to bring in before that, then we'll obviously have that discussion. Uh, anybody have any questions for me at this time? I'll turn it over to David.
So Chef Mac said September he guarantees?
Yes.
Is that what he said?
Yep.
And he can walk it anytime.
Okay.
He continued the proposal. They keep talking about it in the paper. He's continued to go down the line.
I can't hear you guys, so... I said he continued, that Mac is continuing with his proposal to go down to the circle with this southwest, uh, eatery. And I'm just saying, he may say September, right? I think he's got, he can walk it anytime. I, I know he's, I can see what he says, I just, I don't feel comfortable with it.
Bill Weller and I met with him. He has not hired any general contractors. He hasn't had an architect in there yet. Paperwork's not final. September, you know, he's guaranteed us till September. Now, he's, everything else he's always told us has been, you know, a man of his word, so I'm gonna take him at that. Obviously, you know, we told him, you know, that we want, we'd like him here and we want him to stay, but we do need a direct timeline and he provided it for us. I understand your concerns.
I'm just saying, you can only imagine what'll happen if he leaves and we don't have a replacement. I don't wanna be at that meeting.
Yes, I'm gonna go. Uh, thank you very much supervisors, board, residents for letting me, uh, come up here and talk a little bit about how we're gonna do some marketing at the Island View Restaurant and then really, uh, Sun and Lake, um, all together. Basically, uh, the way we've done it is we have a, a plan mapped out for the entire year for the entire facility, not just food and beverage or just golf and membership. We have an entire strategy, but what I'm, wanna talk to you about, uh, is what I pulled out of it to talk about what we're gonna be doing to increase ala carte dining at the restaurant. So if you could go to the next one? All right, so, uh, the first thing is I wanted to talk about are the tools, uh, that we're gonna be using. The, the big one is, uh, what, what we call revenue playbook. It's broken into a, a twelve-month, uh, sections. Um, we provide, uh, what the monthly focuses are, all the different tasks involved. Um, the planning resources are outlined. Uh, we, we've got centralized posts, um, which means that we're doing them from a, a corporate level. Uh, and then we have organic posts, uh, which are from the course level with recommendations and suggestions for each month. Um, we have a, a full, uh, monthly calendar of communication and how that's all gonna go out. And it's a living, breathing tool. We, we meet every two weeks to discuss marketing, uh, at the facility and, uh, this will be the, that playbook will be the tool that, that we use. Uh, and I'll show you more about that playbook when we go on, as we move on here. Uh, the professional photography was a big thing. We've started that already and we need some more. Um, it's one of the biggest challenges we have at not just this facility. Everywhere is good, up-to-date photography, um, and especially food photography is very difficult. So we've, uh, we've started that process and we'll continue it throughout the year as well. Our biggest strategies, and the three that I'm really gonna show you today, uh, are the top three are, uh, the social media-focused ad campaign, um, which is, uh, very much bolstered over previous years. We're gonna start a direct mail campaign within the Sun and Lake community, um, for just awareness, uh, how they can connect and, and what we have here. Uh, and we've revamped, revamped, uh, the billboards. We're working now with the, the radio station to revamp our radio ads to make them more food-centric. Uh, we'll continue to work with the community channels of getting out, uh, information. Uh, we'll continue to update the website and anything you need to know about what's happening at the club should be on that website and we'll continue to focus on improving that and then making sure what we call our point-of-sale displays, that's our onsite marketing collateral is, is always up-to-date and strong. Uh, so if you move ahead, I'd like to show you the, the, what the revenue playbook looks like. It's just a, a few slides, um, and it's, uh, I'm only gonna show you a small portion of it, but just so you have an idea what we're talking about, we'll make this avail. We'll get this email to you guys, you can print it out and have a copy of the full marketing plan. Um, but, uh, but just go from there. So the first thing we do is, is we give the team some tools, uh, in our marketing guide of, hey, if you wanna send an email out, here's how to do it. Uh, so if you go to the next slide, you can see that. The next slide'll be, hey, if you wanna put in, uh, for an event, it looked a lot better in my PowerPoint presentation, uh, on my computer. And then how we're gonna promote an event, just so we're all on the, on the same page. So if you skip ahead to the next one where we start getting into the, to the marketing plan, the first thing are the ongoing tasks that we need the staff to be doing at, at all times here at the property. It's getting the weekly emails, uh, together, keeping the website up to date, uh, making sure we're responding to online reviews, which are so important, that they're keeping the onsite collateral up to date and that they're, uh, make sure that on social media we have a lot of organic posts happening. Um, so then what we'll do is each month we'll have, um, three basic, uh, sections. So the first section is what is our focus and, and what are the things that we are focusing on this month? It doesn't mean that's the only thing we're doing, but these are the biggest things that we're focused on for that particular month. As you can see in January, uh, we're really gonna promote, uh, banquets and celebrations right after the holidays. A lot of people get engaged, so we're gonna focus on that. Uh, we're gonna promote ways for, for people in the community to stay connected with the golf course because that always seems to be an issue is people just not knowing, so we wanna get some, some, uh, awareness campaigns out there on how you can, can, uh, stay connected with what's happening and then what we're gonna be doing for our ala carte marketing. Um, so what we do is we take all of our, our focuses and we put them into this, uh, program called Reich. It's a tool that we use. It's a project management tool. And so if Mike wants to send out an email, he puts the request into Reich with all the information, then our team takes it and, and, uh, we get the email sent out. So the Reich is a, is a, um, kind of a newer tool for us and it's been really, really amazing. And I'll show you one of the cool things that, that it does for us as we move forward here. On the left was just some notes of what I do. Also give them some resources, um, some things to be thinking about as, as we're doing additional programming and planning at the facility. Uh, I want them to know what, what are the PGA events and LPGA events, what our big focus is, uh, from, from a corporate standpoint. Every month we have a, a new, um, a, a new theme that we wanna promote, whether it's family golf, um, uh, could be military, uh, Januaries, I don't know why it's still TBD. I'll, I'll get that one updated. Any major dates of interest that they need to know about it and then, uh, any big sporting events, because you can plan promotions around that. Um, in the purple there on top, we're gonna show them, these are the posts that we're doing from a, a, a corporate standpoint. Um, and then underneath here are a bunch of recommendations of, of things that you can do, uh, to stay connected. Um, and then the last page is going to be a, a calendar. Now, that calendar is not a calendar of events, that's a calendar of communication. Days that your emails are going out, days that social media posts are going out or ads, um, and any other type of communications that we're doing. So we've, we are able to have this calendar for every month to make sure that we do have really good communication planned out. That's what Reich produces for us. It's, um, it's, it's really been a, a great help for us. So that's really, and then, so for the rest of the months, we'll, we'll have those three pages as well. Um, also on top of that, so then when we, we wanna promote with our Facebook ad campaigns, um, so what we're doing with that is we've figured out the target, uh, audience and we are not gonna, uh, limit it. It's twenty-one to, to whoever's still alive, to whatever age, um, and anybody who wants to eat, uh, which is everybody. Um, so it's, we're gonna get it out there. We're gonna focus within a fifteen-mile radius around in Sun and Lake. I, I really think we're gonna push that back to ten, looking at the, the, um, just looking at the maps. Um, but what we'll reach is we expect to reach about sixty-five thousand people. Now, uh, the way it's gonna work is, um, each month there'll be numerous ads that go out and you, when I say sixty-five thousand people, one person might see four ads and so that counts as four. They're seeing it multiple times. It's built for you to be able to see the ads multiple times. We don't want it to just come once into your feed. We want you to see multiple ads multiple times, um, and that's how it's gonna stick. So we're looking to reach anywheres between, uh, forty-two thousand and a hundred and twenty-three thousand hits. Um, and then we want, uh, about a thousand people to click on it to learn more information and that's on a, on a monthly basis, but we'll continue to look at the data and make adjustments as we need to. That's the beauty of, of online marketing, uh, that you can make changes on the fly very quickly, uh, based on results. So depending on how they're performing, our team, um, from a corporate level, we'll, we'll look at those numbers on a daily basis and make the adjustments as we need to. So what are, what are our Facebook ads gonna look like? Okay, so we're gonna have a, a daily specials campaign and i- it's not live right now, so you can't see that there, but there's multiple pictures. It's what's called a carousel. Um, so it's gonna, each night, there's different theme nights and we're gonna promote them from a, a social media standpoint through that ad. Now, that's gonna be Facebook, Instagram, it's gonna go into reels and stories and it's also gonna go into Messenger. So if you're using social media, you'll be able to find us many different ways throughout social media as well. So we're, that'll be one of the campaigns we'll, we're gonna continue to run. Uh, we'll have, oh, I'm sorry, if you could go back, I wasn't ready yet, sorry. Um, we'll have a restaurant brand awareness campaign, uh, just letting people know that, hey, we're here, we're open to the public, come out, we want everybody to come. We're gonna promote happy hours. We're also gonna look at, uh, some early bird and some late-night, uh, happy hour campaigns that we'll add to it as well. So we're gonna focus that. Uh, you can go to the, the next page. We'll also gonna do a big promotion on corporate events. Um, that one will dial in a little bit more, obviously, and, uh, we'll make sure it's a segmented and won't have the same numbers, but we are gonna push, uh, corporate events and that's also, when I say corporate events, it's also charity events, weddings, parties of all, all kinds. Uh, and then we'll also continue to have golf campaigns along the way. So this is gonna be a much more, um, concentrated effort than we have in the past. Uh, we'll put more money behind it and we'll be able to reach a lot more people locally. So that'll be the social media campaign side of it. Um, this is what we're talking about for a direct mail piece. Um, just trying to get people to know, hey, this is the place we want you to come. We're really gonna push the open to the public, um, and to come out and see us today. So the front is on the left, the back is with the little QR code that people can use and it'll take them to our website to give up, excuse me, to give them, uh, more information. So that will be the direct mail campaign that we're gonna send out in January, uh, to the local, uh, just to the Sun and Lake community mostly. And then, uh, digital, the new digital billboards that we've put together, you know, we went through many different designs and the big thing is we want people to know that they can come, whether they live here or not, uh, and what we have. Um, and that one has, uh, hit us all, like we all saw and immediately said, yeah, that's the one. You drive past that, you know everything you need to know, what we do here, uh, and if you can come or not, and everybody's just gonna Google us to get more information anyway. So that's how that, uh, di- digital billboard's gonna work. And again, because it's digital, we can update and change that as well and we're working on another one because we have two options that we can use and one it'll be more geared towards events. So that'll be the, the, the big new focuses that we'll be doing for, for ala carte dining, for marketing.
Any questions? I mean, I think the plan that you got is, 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 it's a good plan, but I don't think it's gonna accomplish what we're looking to accomplish.
What are you looking to accomplish?
More business, more revenue. I think that helps, but I think we missed the boat on, 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 on what we're trying to achieve. Let me ask you this. We have a special every night, just about. So in December, in January, we've, we've had the specials for three months, so we must have a pretty good gauge on good ones and bad ones. And there's always gonna be good ones and bad ones. So what's the plan to replace them? And what are we gonna replace them with in January? I can tell you, there is no plan.
The, what do you mean by the day? What do you mean by...
If we have a special every night, they all are not successful. So we should be changing them like every three or four months with something new. Keep people, get people interested, you know? That's how you keep people interested in the restaurant, is if, if Italian night's not working out on Thursdays, then we should have a different, something else. But we should plan this out. We shouldn't have to wait for somebody to tell us. We should probably change out the two weakest specials every four months or every three months. What's the plan to change the menu next? Do we have one? These are things, but I'm just saying, I'm just bringing them up because that's how...
Absolutely, and you're a hundred percent right on all of that. So we, you know, the new menu's been out for five weeks now and same thing with some of our weekly specials. And yes, we will reevaluate it at the first of the year, but when, when we go to change those and all that other stuff, that's the information that, that we do onsite. I'll work with, with our onsite team, Chef Mac, uh, whoever we have, you know, going in the future. And that's the information I, I bring to David. And that's when we sit down, you know, we've been meeting every week, sometimes a couple times a week, uh, here in the last few weeks, but we'll be meeting every other week and that's the information that I'll be giving to him. So when we go to change our marketing pieces, our billboard, our Facebook ads, uh, we'll, when we make that decision that we're gonna make a change, menus, all that stuff, that's what the onsite team will work with, 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 with their team. But it still falls all into this plan, is how we're gonna get it out.
Let me give you another example. We do coupon books, right?
Absolutely.
How do you track them?
So with the coupon books, it's, it's, it's all at the point-of-sale. So if, say on the golf side, when, when they bring in a coupon book, they're gonna, they're gonna bring in that under that specific item.
Shouldn't we not have a coupon for them to bring in to you guys when they're ordering the food so we can determine what kind of response you're getting for the money that you're putting into it?
Yeah, and, and we've, we've, we've done those and, and the ones that, well, if you see the coupon book right now and actually, we're, we're actually currently doing our one for January, we're getting it ready right now. And yes, we've done that before where if you want twenty-five percent off coupon in there, yes.
I'm not saying what, I'm not telling you what to put on the coupon, but how do you know it's working if you don't capture the coupon?
How do you trace it? How do you, how do you know where your revenue's going?
So when we do coupons, it's right at the point-of-sale. So if we, if, if they, if they do bring in something, which we've done those ads kinda before, you do.
I mean, you have to give them something, I agree.
Absolutely.
To get them to bring in the coupon. Maybe it's two dollars off, three dollars off, whatever it is, that's the only way you could track a coupon.
And you're, you're absolutely right and we, and same thing with our Facebook ads and all that, like, if you, if you read all our Facebook ads, especially on the golf side, you, you'll see where it says must mention this ad and then it goes into our POS system so we can see how many rounds come out of that. We do do that. The current ad in the coupon book right now for the restaurant is, the one that's in December, is our weekly specials. So, so no, obviously, we're not gonna data-track that specific ad, but it's gonna be hard to data-track this specific ad. When it comes to marketing, there's a lot of things, you know, you know, that you market and he may have data on that, that you don't get to track. But I, I'm a hundred percent, when I work with my onsite team, I think just like you do when it comes to that, I tell them all the time that I wanna be data-tracking this at the register.
I'm a great believer, and you and I have had this conversation of if you wanna get something, you gotta give something.
Absolutely.
And we don't give anything, for the most part, we don't. I mean, there's nothing wrong with, uh, you know, in the old days, they used to have those coupons, if you stub it, you get ten stubs, you get a free meal or something like that. We don't do anything along those lines. And I'm not saying that's the vehicle to use, please don't misunderstand me.
Right.
But we're not trying anything to get people to come in. This is great to have a plan like this, but what are we gonna do to get the people to come in? You gotta give something to get them to come in.
So we, we, and...
That's my point.
And we've had plenty of those conversations and we had a couple of ideas that were, that we've, that we've already in the process of, of bringing out, just to your point. Uh, you know, we've had some discussions on folks that, that used to like the old sunset dining where you got a free glass of wine. Um, so in my opinion, where I think we have the most opportunity is probably more in, in the, I don't wanna, we don't wanna call it late night because it's really not that late, but we wanna bring a program like that where they get a free draft beer, a free glass of wine. We're putting that plan together now, so, you know, it would be, um, between 6:30 and 8:00, we would.
We used to do that, like, $10, $10 meals for dinner. Now, this is before everything went crazy. $10 meals for dinner, and you got a glass of free wine. I mean, that wasn't that long ago. Maybe now it's $14, and you get a glass of free wine. But still, it's, it's something.
Right, and that, and that's, we've been talking about it for the last two weeks. We're, we're gonna bring something like that back. But we wanna do it, we wanna do it in an opportune window for us.
We talked, have you done anything about in the, uh, what's the thing you're working on? Have you given them any ideas on what you wanna do as far as?
In their.
We, we've talked about it. Um, I asked for Fish Slap also to make some recommendations there, instead of leaving it super, super open-ended, say, what do you guys think we should put in? Cause I said, look, we really wanna incorporate golf in the restaurant.
Fish Slap can't make the recommendation on what, what the special should be. That should come from them, and then they format it, right?
I mean, they could probably make a rec.
Fish Slap's gonna tell them what, what to do from a marketing standpoint?
Well, they're a marketing firm.
But. We should have something really quick for the current brochures. I mean, I'm telling you, I, you. Three, I'll, I'll just repeat it one more time. We can't continue, somebody said it before, to have the losses that we're having. We've, I'd rather have you try something and come back and say, you guys are crazy, you cost us 10,000, we're 10,000 worse, but we tried everything that we could think of. We got nothing to lose, we don't.
I mean, you can go to Cody's and get a hamburger, hamburger at the bar early at 4 o'clock. Why not have an early bird special? Most of us are not late night people. We drop the ball at 10 o'clock.
No, no, cor- correct, and that's, and that, that, you know, and to answer your question, so, yes, our, our clientele's not a late night crowd. So, so our busiest time is, our busiest time is between 4 and 6. So we don't need, we don't need to cram any more people in there. So our game plan and what we're working on is, we're gonna try to have the special be from 6, 6 or 6:30 to 8, cause that's, that's where the biggest opportunity is. So that, that's the program that we're, that we're coming out, is we're gonna fill that, the, the areas that we're, that we're not busy.
On this ad right here, open to the public, join us today. I would much rather see the join us today gone, and open to the public in bigger letters.
Okay.
People are driving 55 miles an hour. That's what they're gonna see.
One line is, we pay these guys for their expertise, and if they're not experts, we need to get somebody in here that is. So we don't need to be telling them what to do, we need to tell them, this is not acceptable performance. And I think you would admit that's a fair assessment.
I, I think so.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to throw out things.
I know you're trying to help.
Not all of them will work, not all of them should be tried. But we're not trying any of, anything, I don't think.
I just need something different.
I guess. It's, it just, unfortunately, it just seems to continue to fall on deaf ears, that we keep telling you that it's not working. But yet, and then you come in with some plan that you think is gonna make a difference, and it hasn't, but yet you expect us to continue on. And it's to the point where, yeah. I know, you know.
I, I, I wanna, so, so what, my question is, is, is what, what is your tool of measurement to how we're doing? So last, so, I mean, so, so over the last three years, well, obviously, you gotta take kinda COVID out of it. So if you really give us the last two years, year over year, revenue-wise, the restaurant was pretty close to $100,000 more in revenue than it has at any time in the, in the previous years. So if, if you're, if, if, if revenue dollars is what you're looking for, and cover served, what we're doing is working. We are getting busier, we're, we're finding more revenue streams, everything is.
Maybe we should change revenue to profit, is that better? If I say profit dollars?
And, and I totally agree, and I, and I totally agree that, that last year, on the, on the, on the bottom line, could've been better, but we definitely struggled with, with several things. And, and our trends now, now that we're, we're staffed properly, and, and we're, and we're getting all those things under line, I think our cost of goods are getting better. When you start to see, you know, the last couple months, and even October, which those financials you'll be seeing soon, a lot of those things are, are now falling in line. And that's when we're gonna see the bottom line grow. But the top line revenue, it has been growing. We are finding new people to come in here.
I think, I, listen, Mike, we're just trying to throw out, I think, ideas that we want you to consider. And we want you guys to really do it yourselves. We don't wanna, I, this is not a comfortable thing for me to be saying, you should try this, you should try that. That's not my job. But your job is to stimulate the traffic and decrease the, the losses. That's your job.
No, absolutely, and believe me, we, we, me and David have spent several hours with, with his team and my team, and we've talked about a lot, a lot of these ideas that you're talking about. You know, the, the greatest thing we're working on with them is, is they work with all sorts of other clubs. What's working at the other clubs, what's not working at the other clubs? Uh, and we've, we've spent several hours discussing all those things, and, and that's where we've come up with, you know, our marketing plan and a lot of things that we're gonna do. But a lot of that information does come from us onsite.
I think, I think you got the message of what we're talking about.
Absolutely.
From our standpoint, what we're looking for. I think this is a great step. I mean, what you're doing, David, is good, but I think you gotta go a little further with other things to stimulate the business. We don't have the traffic that we used to have. We've lost a lot of residents, a lot of residents. I mean, I remember Wednesday night, when we used to come in from playing golf, there'd be four or five tables of us having dinner. Ain't nobody no more. So we've, we've turned off the residents as well as the general public, I think, my personal opinion. So we've gotta figure out a way to get them back, that's all. And you've started, you've done some good things, the service, I think, has improved. You know, I mean, the, the staff, I think, is probably the best it's been in a while, but you gotta get the dollars to support it. That's it. You guys wanna, did you, if it's a critique on them, I'd rather not, but go ahead, give it a shot.
Bill Norcross, a quick, uh, comment from, uh, Mike and David, I guess. On their advertising, I, I like to see Sun and Lake pictures, pictures of Sun and Lake people, people of, in Sun and Lake golf courses. Every time you get one of these advertising things, you get pictures of some golf course out west, or the Bahamas, and all the people look like they just come out of Playboy. I like to see real people. Our people are good-looking people, aren't we?
Did you say Playboy?
We have a lot of, I, I couldn't hear you that.
You did say Playboy, didn't you?
But anyhow, just try to understand, uh, you, you pick up a brochure, and you look at these things, and it's not real. You want real pictures of real people and real golf courses, that's it, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Real quick again, my name is Karen Emery. Uh, I'm not a marketing major, but I'm a common sense person to get where I'm at in life, but I think you're missing opportunity with, we have the Heartlands Games here, and you can't put together a box of a meal for under $15. I'm like, what the hell are you doing? That is a missed opportunity, when you could actually market people that are here in our community.
In their defense, we didn't know we had the, some of us didn't know we had the Heartland Games till today.
Well, I thought she said that this was brought to you and agreed upon for January. Yeah, box lunch. He's bringing in a vendor, she said, because she can't afford it. She went to, she went to the.
I retract my last statement.
I thought we're voting on it.
Yeah.
I, I thought we're gonna.
No, you.
Island View was approached first, and they couldn't produce a box for $15, so she's going to another vendor. That was what I got out of it, please correct me if I'm wrong. But I'm thinking, you're missing out, when you got people right on your grounds, and you're not advertising. That's my thought.
Valid point. Any other, uh, comments from the board, or the residents?
I misunderstood that. On this.
Your mic.
On this, um, Heartland Games, I thought she was asking.
Your mic's not working.
I thought she was asking about bringing someone in, and she was asking us. So she's telling us she's bringing something in, and we're not gonna give Mike, um, our restaurant a chance to.
He already quoted at $15 for a box lunch, and she said that's too expensive. That's why she's going someplace else.
So what could the box lunch get down to?
Right. Now that's, now that's common sense, that's a good question. What can it get to? I mean, give Michael a chance.
I have my, I have her on my list to call this afternoon, and I'll figure that out.
Let's keep the business here in Sun and Lake, that's what I wanna do.
She tried.
She tried. She tried, and they told her $15.
Mike can make a box lunch for under 10, give it to me.
You're hired.
Chicken wraps and a bag of chips and a coat, you got it.
I misunderstood what you, I'm sorry, I, I thought she was asking us what to do.
It's on my list.
I've played in the, the Heartland's game, the Bridge and the Ukra over, the, that's what we got, the chicken wrap.
So what could?
From Walmart, cut in half, and a bag of chips.
We could do that, I don't know why they couldn't do it. Sorry, that's a missed opportunity.
And when you're, when you're working, it tasted pretty good, I'll tell you.
I agree with Michael.
So just, just to clarify, so we're a little bit outside of the scope of what we're talking about here, but yes, so, you, you know, and that's probably what the offer was on a box lunch. And we do tournaments and all sorts of box lunches like that, but you also gotta remember that, that, that's an inclusive price, okay? So it's, it's not $15 plus tax plus gratuity, as you would see something on the menu. So if you're looking at something that's more like in the $9 range, and then, you know, obviously, when we do box lunches, there's gonna be, you're gonna incur the cost of all the material to box individual lunches. But, you know, we're not set up to, to cater off, that would be considered catering off-site, because that, you're, you're looking next door. For us to, to go over there and cater next door, like, like a food vendor would, is not necess, is not what we're set up to do. We could do a box lunch, and, and I'm not sure, I, I wasn't in the conversation of what was offered them in their box lunch. I, I mean, we could probably figure out something a little, a little bit less, but I just want you to know that you, we're talking all-in prices here, so that all-in, you're probably looking at $10 or $11 before you get to the other stuff.
So we're gonna look into it.
It's way off topic here, but.
All right, we'll look into it.
I can meet with Julie, I know Julie very well, so I can.
The issue is, we've gotta make the decision now, cause it's gonna happen in January. But I will, I will call her this afternoon. I'll try to talk to Michael and see if there's any way we can do whatever she wants done, but I'd.
I would prefer to do it in home, in-house.
So would I.
I would too, but.
I, I would do, but Dan, you can't call us after, she had a death in her family, so wait till Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, Monday, I'll call.
Okay, anything else for these guys? I'd just like to know next time that we do the Heartland Games, or whatever we do, that if they're gonna have food here, they buy it here? I mean, cause we're giving them, we're giving them.
That's why we asked her to come here, because she brought it to us, she came and asked us, and we told her that's not a decision that we are prepared to make on our own, and that she needed to come and speak to the Board of Supervisors and get permission before she brought in anyone.
I didn't wanna say too much to her, cause I didn't wanna create. I would agree with Mike going forward, I think the district makes that decision. If the board, if you want our recommendation, it's in-house.
Okay. I will just tell her, I told her that's the way it's gotta be, if she wants to have it here. But you know, you have, we don't, well. We got a lot of people from other clubs that are gonna be coming here. We should be able to do, we should put our best foot forward, put it that way.
I agree. Anything else for these gentlemen?
If you don't want an outside vendor here, I'll tell her exactly that.
Thank you, I appreciate the work, thank you. Anything on the restaurant committee?
Uh, yeah.
Speak into, speak into the microphone. I'm gonna have to get you a headset.
That, they asked me that. I met with, uh, Brian and Bill Wheeler. Bill Wheeler?
There you go.
Corporate, um, and we talked about the restaurant committee. They asked what we were looking for, I explained it to them. The restaurant committee, um, has done pretty well, I think. I, I did have some problems with certain people overstepping their bounds, uh, we straightened that out. I think the restaurant has improved a lot. Um, and I, um, and, um, I'm meeting with Michael and Jessica and their staff, they've been great with me. We had a dinner, I think it was Saturday, um, I thought it went pretty well. I mean, there were some complaints, some people, the chicken wasn't done perfect, but you know what, they did 200 and, 230 people, I thought it went pretty well. Service was good. So I asked my committee about, you know, do we still need this committee? Uh, the majority of them said yes, but we didn't have to meet, meet, um, every month. And after meeting with Brian and Bill, they thought we should meet once a month, because they felt that the committee has helped. So, um, I, I'll be meeting in January with the committee, and we'll be going over that, and I'll get back to you. We'll be, we'll be meeting once a month, or every six weeks, I'm not really sure how we're gonna do it. You know, just to keep things going, so that's really much, you know, that's all I got to say. And if any, any questions about the committee, I mean, I mean, I can answer them now.
Mike, do you have minutes or any written reports that?
We do have minutes, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I didn't get into anybody.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I would just say, Saturday night did go well, uh, service-wise and meal-wise. But the meal, the steak was back to what we've always had, and I was, we had talked about possibly moving, upgrading that slightly to where, what like it was, and what was it Halloween that we had?
Yeah, so obviously, we, we had the discussion, we understand what happened on Halloween, but, but on this situation, I've sent, uh, Dan some information on that, but the one thing that we ultimately gotta remember, when it comes to this, is it's not my decision whether we charge more and, and upgrade the steak. This event is, is put on by the MGA. So the MGA would make the decision on how much money they wanna spend, and if they wanna purchase enough, it means no difference to me, if they want the better steak, they have that option, it, but, but I, it's, it's just like if somebody wants to bring in a wedding, I don't tell them, you know, you have to have the top steak, or we, we wouldn't fit in their budget, it's their choice if they wouldn't like to do that.
Did you, did you price this other steak to them?
I put it all together, and I gave it to Dan, and I, I spoke to them, if, if they wanna.
Never mind, never mind. Michael.
I've, I've, I've spoke, yeah, I've, no, I've spoke with, with the MGA Board President, yes, but all, yeah.
About pricing?
Correct, so, but you gotta remember, when we did the Halloween, when, when, back, when we were back in, doing the Halloween couples, this, this event's already, that, that event's already booked and done.
We're not supposed to be making.
We're months ahead of the, on these things.
We shouldn't be making a lot of money off of our own membership, just to let.
Oh, believe me, the prices is definitely lower than the, than the public price, which I presented to Dan as well.
Let me ask you this, I forgot to bring this up before. I know there was a problem a couple Fridays ago, where you restricted the amount of people that you, that took reservations on, to 100. Hear me out now, before you get defensive. And you had entertainment that night. And you had a full menu, but you're able to serve 200 or so people with a limited menu. So my question to you would be, maybe that's a consideration going forward. If you have live entertainment, restrict the menu. To afford more people to attend, you'll come out ahead.
No, I, I'm, I'm a hundred percent with you, and I've, I've done that in the past, and, and I've had complaints about having restricted menus, but if we, we could, so we're doing that same event coming up again in, in, in January, uh, same, same band and everything, SNL Drive's coming back. We could put 253, probably 250 would be max.
Why wouldn't you wanna do that?
Well, we, we can, if, well, it's gonna, we can, but there's, what's gonna happen is, is we're gonna need everybody to RSVP in advance, if we have a two-option dinner, and there, and we do this when we do New Year, when we do, we do it when we do Valentine's Day.
So do it. See, here's, here's, here's an example of not taking the bull by the horn, saying, we want 250 people here, you got three choices, when you make your reservations, or two When you make your reservations, or two choices, when you make your reservations, tell us what you want and you'll be taken care of. And you get two-hundred-and-fifty people at whatever price as opposed to a hundred people at a different price.
Yeah, and-
But that's supposed to come from you guys, not from-
It has, and I have. And every time there's a reaction, there's a reaction and you'll, and I'm more than happy to go back and do that again. And I can already tell you the complaints you'll get going after that. So I will do it again.
I'd rather piss off people telling them that it's restricted menu than telling people who've booked full and they walk in and there are empty tables.
Well, it's a communication issue. So if you're going to do that, you just need to tell them. And I don't mean tell the people, I mean tell these people so that when somebody comes and jacks them up because they didn't get whatever tofu they wanted, they know why and then they can address it. But you give them surprises, they're not going to like it, I can promise you that.
I assume you'd want as many people as can. You got to be paying for the band.
Absolutely. So that's the game plan going into this next deal. Well, you know, we actually sat down with Dan. We talked about doing buffets and I know a lot of people don't like buffets, but we could serve plenty that way as well.
Just a thought. Thank you. All right, anything else? Let's move on to working. Maybe we ought to look at revisiting the speaker system. We were once talking about microphones on- this system seems to be giving us some troubles.
So the system was largely, we've been working on it to make the current system work and working with Chris to make small improvements, but those were kind of halted. We're at the point now where I've been given permission to work with Coral to start getting some headsets and better audio equipment. That way you guys aren't having the issues.
If you can make this better, you have our permission.
Absolutely. And Will, I'm going to be working with Coral and we'll work directly with Coral, Dan and Dane and make sure that we get that approved and get it done.
Do you guys hear everything?
Not everything.
Yeah, it's, absolutely. And it's a project that has been a work in progress, but we haven't had the permission to move forward on it. Now that I'm working with Coral and Dan, we should be able to get a pretty quick resolution to get what we need in here, okay?
Okay. We'll let you guys deal with it.
We need batteries that last more than four hours.
I'm sorry?
We're in there, she says we either need better batteries or shorter meetings. Which one you want?
All right. Engineering. Drew. Bob.
You skipped Bob.
Whomever.
We'll go together. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Bob Brumfield, the Road and Drainage Supervisor of Dog Park. We finally got signage yesterday, resident-only signs, wheelchair access only signs. We'll put those up today. Also, Mr. Herrick, I got no outlet sign for Pebble Beach to put up. That might be up already.
Is security-
It's not Pebble, Sandboro, San Donido. Yes, every one of them, yep.
Security phone numbers on the sign.
I'm sorry.
Security phone numbers on the sign.
On the resident-only sign?
Yes.
No, it's not. It's on the, I believe it's on the-
It's on the rules sign. It's not on the resident-only sign that's on the outside, but it's on the rules sign that's in the dog park, yes.
Okay.
There's still parking right in front. I mean, every time I go by, there's somebody parking in front. I don't know how you fix it, if it can be fixed. I'm just telling you, it's, we haven't gotten to the point where they know where to go with the carts.
All right, so, just so I know, because I got a text right here while I was sitting here, that someone-
Speak into the microphone.
Someone, some dog bit another dog and it was a outside person. So now, now the dog park is resident-only. Am I correct?
Yes.
Resident, okay. Okay. How are, how are they going to, or Bob, going to police it?
If you give him two minutes, he'll tell you.
Okay.
And he was looking into the cost, somebody was going to look into the cost?
Card access, so you can lock the gates. I got pricing this morning from one fence company. It's expensive, a standalone which can be programmed at that spot. And you can put in block numbers. You can do a lot of them at the same time. Say you program one through fifty or one through a hundred or whatever. Those, to get the gate with the magnetic locks, with the standalone card reader is about three thousand dollars per gate. And we have three gates.
Three thousand per gate?
Three thousand per gate. Plus, the cards are five dollars each. So that's, there's an expense for that.
Still sounds cheaper than the twenty-five thousand we were talking about.
Are they the same cards that you use to get into this facility?
They won't work here, they'll only work there. And that's just, that's just a standalone. I don't have a price on the computer like what we have throughout the district. I don't have a price on that yet.
Does that include the price to run power?
The electrical part would be another fifteen hundred. So we're looking at about twelve thousand dollars to do three different gates.
Personally, if it's twelve thousand dollars to settle this issue, I would vote yes. And so would I.
I would vote yes.
What, my only question would be, I know right now at the pickleball courts, we just let people in. I mean, and you, and aren't we going to end up doing the same thing here?
That's a possibility, yes.
If they do and somebody's dog bites them, we know who is in and who isn't, I'm assuming.
The cards, each person that gets a card will be registered to that person. And you can monitor who's in and out.
Well, it's the same as the pickleball court because we have problems with people letting people in there.
But we also-
If you see that person doing that, letting that person-
Well, they don't get in trouble with the pickleball court.
I don't-
Nobody's turning them in then.
I-
I think this is a good start.
It's got to be some, you know, a little bit of self-policing here is going to be required. You can't have a fail-safe, somebody's always going to let somebody else in if you let them.
And now we have a code of conduct-
That's what I was going to say, that's, we didn't address it in the code of conduct, but I can definitely make that change. So that, I mean, it's a violation to, you know, violating the rules is a violation.
Absolutely.
And if you violate the rules, you may be suspended, period.
Listen, we had, and this is personal and I am sorry. My husband went over there Sunday while I was at church and a dog knocked him down by the fence so he could pull himself back up and then barked at my dog. The lady was sitting on the bench, never offered to help my husband up, never took, recommended her dog, and she was from outside. Now, I'm sorry. You can't do that. What if there was a child in the small dog park and got bit? We have a liability. We have to police this, we have to control it. I'm sorry.
I kind of agree with you, Beverly.
Ariel?
I know this, all these problems aren't from outside people because I go there, but I understand what you're saying. And I thought, it sounds to me like I can go along with it, but I just don't want different rules in different places. And-
Well, I don't think it's a different rule.
But it isn't all outside people. We have-
It isn't a different rule, Mike.
Well, it is if we open up the pickleball courts, which I heard we might do that.
But if it's, if it's open, then there's nobody violating anything because you're just letting them in.
I thought the pickleball courts were open anywhere.
No, they're not.
No.
You have to be a member of the pickleball, the racket club and-
And they're letting them in and-
No, we took our PAC money to build those courts, so we have to allow outside people to be members, but they pay a hundred and fifty, seventy-five dollars a year to be members.
So they're letting them in.
So Ariel, I have a question. Someone, what's the age, what's the youngest person that's supposed to be in the dog park? Because somebody, there was residents said that somebody had their baby carriage in there and the dogs are running around and they had cookies in there, stroller, you know? What is the age?
There is no age.
I doubt if we have one.
I think there's supposed to be.
Give me a second. I don't know that off the top of my head. Let me look up my rules and-
I just want to make sure that we address that. No?
Guests under the age of sixteen must be accompanied by an adult. Guests under the age of five are not permitted inside the dog park is what's on the rules listed in the-
I thought there was a-
It's on, it's on that.
It's on those big old signs. And I think we have two in each dog park.
Well, I'm surprised. I mean, I think at this point in time, Bob, we would like you to get good quotes, get your other quote, like you did with the dog park, put it on a piece of paper for us. This is what it's going to cost, these are options, and we'll decide when you have that information.
Okay. And also the recall for the garbage cans. I spoke with Bob Diefendorf with the county and he says we should go to the end of the year just to start a new year fresh. We'll have an email go out Monday that states that as far as the trash cans, recycle being brought back, won't be accepted after the first of the year.
That's fine, good. Anything else?
That's all I have.
One other thing with the dog park. Can you put signs where they would park, resident-only? All right?
Yes, yes, we could do that.
I'll check, if you want me to check in, I think if you want towing to be an option, I think we are required to put, you have to, if towing is going to be an option, you have to put a sign up that says, you know, tow-away zone. And you have to, we have to determine what towing company we would use and have that information on the sign.
You're talking about the dog park?
The dog park is golf carts.
Oh, okay.
It's not regular-
Tow-away zone for golf carts?
It's down there, further they park.
Some park there on the street for the dog park here.
Yeah, that happens, but it's, the big problem is the golf carts in front.
Okay, Drew, I think you've done, thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Drew.
Um, there, this was brought to my attention probably a couple of weeks ago on Peg and Pebble Wests. There was a single-family resident lot that Southern Homes was building on. I guess the homeowner drove by and they saw water standing on the lot, which is not uncommon at different areas around here, but I guess the owner at the time wanted to back out of the purchase of building on that lot. So they, I got an email chain forwarded to me on trying to figure out what's going on with the lot. Why was it wet? Is it a drainage problem? What's going on? I was familiar with the lot because we've done permitting right next to it. And I put on the permit, when they permitted this location, that it looked to be a historical wetland. And I'm pretty sure that it is. All that was permitted to be mitigated for in the old Army Corps of Engineers permit, which I don't know who's, if we can scroll down a little bit, there's a master map that has been put together by different permitting agencies. That's, that's part of the map right there. It's listed as the wetland to be filled. So basically, they just need to demuck it and fill it in. I believe that's the current, I don't know who, I don't know if it's Sunday or who knew about it, but I think the buyer is now going to go back and, after they demuck it and fill it back in. It shouldn't be a drainage-related problem at this time, but they are going to correct the issue and still build on it.
There's building material already delivered to the lot, so they must have changed their mind.
I did get CC'd on an email between our old environmental scientist that we had on staff and Southern Homes of Polk County. They did hire him to go out and do an environmental assessment and he gave them depths of the muck and everything and I believe they're going to do the proper demucking and refill, so.
Good.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Anything else? No? Any questions for Drew?
I have a question for Bob. Did you order the bag things for each things at the dog park?
I'm sorry, the what?
Where you get the bags.
Oh, the doggy park.
There's two of them. We need two more.
Yes, we've gotten, we've gotten more in. They should be filled up.
I get, I get a lot of questions because they don't, they know they're not going to come in the front, except the wheelchair, and they go on the sides and there's no bags there.
Okay.
On each side, in the back.
Okay, yes, okay.
Okay, code enforcement. Bob, you still, you back there?
You know, we could have changed.
Are you awake?
Good afternoon. I am Bob Hiltz. I'm the code enforcement officer. I included the report for October and November, but I also included the year-end report from the previous year for as far as totals. As you can see, we have addressed the trash can issue as I was requested by the board and we're getting good compliance from it, but we're still have to repeat a couple, hopefully to get everybody in line so they know how to store their trash cans and they're not leaving them in the driveways and along sidewalks, that kind of thing. But it is working, it's just going to take some time.
Did you have a magistrate hearing?
All the magistrate hearings were postponed.
Oh.
But they are, they'll be rescheduled.
Okay. How many do you have?
Any questions for Bob?
There we go. Thank you.
How about Miguel? Is he here?
Four hours. Four hours he's had here for that. Waste of, a waste of labor.
Yes, sir.
Miguel Hernandez from security. For the month of November and the watch orders, we went from October to seven-hundred-and-five to five-hundred in November. We had around three calls to the sheriff's office, mostly regarding dogs loose. And our mileage, in total, we did seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-two miles between both we did around ninety calls for the month.
I got a question. I think last, last meeting, I think I cut you off before you had a chance to-
Oh, yeah. I don't have the October one with me.
I cut you off before you had a chance to pass this out?
Yeah.
So I guess you didn't have with you? The next, he gave me a traffic survey summary for San Ignacio Drive. So at the next meeting, if you would re-present this to the board so-
Yes.
-we could decide what we want to do on it, I would appreciate it.
No problem. I have my papers in the office.
Just make sure it gets part of the book next month so we can look at it and review.
No problem.
Any other questions for him? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Somebody brought up, I mean, a couple of guys brought up a point. We got to figure out why, I think it's important that the committee reports on monthly basis.
The what?
I think it's important that the committee members report on their committees monthly. However, it's been brought to my attention that to have them sitting here for four hours or three hours is probably not necessarily a good thing either. So I will throw it out to you guys, what, maybe we should put them first in the meeting or I don't know what we have to do, but I happen to agree. I think for them to sit this long and, I mean, I assume their time is, could be used